Before we start with public comment, there's a few remarks. First of all, let you know that right after public comment is the budget hearing. And public comment, we have rules of decorum that require you to keep your remarks under three minutes. You can speak on any topic that moves you. And the council is not allowed, I also wanted the orders of decorum, not to respond. So essentially, we listen, but we're not allowed to respond. It's different in the public hearing that will come for the budget. In that case, you're speaking directly on the budget, not about any other topic, but topics related to the budget, in which case you're allowed to speak as long as you want, if it seems appropriate, and the council is allowed to respond and correspond. So if you were queuing up to speak in public comment and thought you were just sort of restrained by the three minutes, hold your fire, and in a matter of moments after that, you'll be allowed to have a more open conversation about what you're looking for. So that said, the public comment, as I said, is we ask you to keep your remarks to three minutes or under. You have to fill the three minutes if you want to. And then, we also ask that, well, actually, on the three-minute rule, the one thing I want you to consider is that if you're winding up at three minutes, that's fine, but if you're winding up to start another paragraph or another thought, that's not fine. I'll ask you to please stop, save it for next time, or write it out. And if you refuse to do that, then we will call a recess, the cameras will go off, and we'll wait until you quit the chambers. So, that said, let's get to it. First up, I ask, as you step up, just repeat your name and your address. Thank you.
Anthony Batullo, Autumn Drive, Florence, Massachusetts. I'm here to state my opinion against the override. There's been a lot of discussion about costs and what it's going to cost the average family, et cetera. And all I'd like to state is that we've got to look at what the tax rate is going to be. The tax rate right now is $14.26. If the override goes through with the debt exclusions slated from the mayor's notes at being 1.4 million, with new growth being about 600,000, the tax rate will be somewhere north of $15.50 per thousand. And so, an average house of $300,000, that's about $375. We're talking families on this, but we're not looking at businesses as well. I just sort of looked at some of the assessor's records for property values on downtown. In downtown, one large building is valued at $4,500,000. Their tax bill is going to go up over $5,500. It's going to have an effect on small businesses because people that say they don't own property, no problem, well, your rent is going to go up. It's going to cost you more to have that place. Landlord's going to pass that cost along, and they'll probably add a contingency with it. There are a lot of things that are out there that are on, that we're going to have to pay for. And again, if you feel comfortable with knowing that we've got stormwater management, knowing that these fees are going to be forever, not a three- or four-year deal, but forever, we'll have added $5,100,000 to our base tax levy that stays there, that we calculate our 2.5% override on forever. If you feel comfortable with that, vote yes. But I'm feeling a lot of people are not comfortable with that. Please vote no, but whatever you do, I please respect, hopefully that you'll go out and vote. This is too important to stay at home and do nothing. This will go on forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Before we get to the next person, I've got a notice here that we're not actually streaming online now, is it possible? Do we know anything? So are we, or we're not?
We're not.
We're not online? Okay. But it is being recorded, so it will be rebroadcast and available online.
Will be on the TV?
Is it playing on air on NCTV?
Yes.
It is, so it's just not available as an online stream right now. Got it. Next up, Charles Coleman.
My name is Charles Coleman, Acre Brook Drive, Florence, Mass. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. My name is Charles Coleman. I live in Florence section, not North Hampton. Tonight, I am here representing the Veterans Council of North Hampton. My purpose here is to lie and give a brief description and invitation to the community on behalf of the Veterans Council of North Hampton to join with us for our third annual Flag Day Retirement Ceremony on June 9, 2013, in conjunction with the X Lodge 997, located at 17 Spring Street, Florence, Mass., time 3:00 p.m., rain or shine. The ceremony is divided into two phases. Phase one will be conducted by the Elks with a short narration of each flag read by Michael Barsley with assistance from Boy Scout Troop 109, who will represent, who will present the different flags throughout our nation's history. We're past 238 years, from the colonial flag to the present-day Stars and Stripes. Phase two will be conducted by the Veterans Council of North Hampton with the performance to perform the actual flag retirement ceremony in conjunction with all service organizations supporting all area, North Hampton area veterans. American Legion, the Safe Old American Veterans, X Lodge 997, Veterans of Foreign Wars, and World War II Association Club of North Hampton. In case of inclement weather, the Elks portion of the ceremony will be conducted inside the Elks Lodge. Since the flags are required to be burnt, this portion of the ceremony will be conducted at a later time. At the conclusion of the ceremony, light refreshments will be served behind the main tent. Again, the public is cordially invited to attend. Thank you for your time and attention. Hope to see you at the flag retirement ceremony. Remember, this Sunday, June 9, X Lodge, 17 Spring Street, Florence, 3:00 p.m., rain or shine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Edward Judge? Is that right? Did I get that right?
Yep.
Okay.
My name is Edward Judge. I live on Autumn Drive in Florence, and I'm speaking on the two-point, on the override. I've lived in North Hampton for 36 years and have watched the city change, the upgrade of the high school, the fire station, the police station, and all have come into being over the last several years, and they are expensive and paid for with a debt exclusion. But when they're paid for, the taxes will revert back to the baseline values. The permanent $2.5 million increase to our baseline tax levy seems manageable, but with the coming mandatory sewer fee, which will be attached to the water bill as well, the average house will see a big increase in what it owes the city. There may be considerably more, whoops, excuse me, that should have been edited out. And don't forget that the $2.5 million is forever, and the sewer assessment, I believe, will hang for 20 years, which is a long time. Those with fixed incomes who have kept their properties so far may be pushed to the financial brink and lose it. College may become beyond the families with tight budgets. From what I see, the rebates proposed are falling far short of what will save many citizens of marginal means from losing their house. I agree that art, music, sports, and such are important, but should we put somebody out of their home for them? The gentrification of North Hampton shouldn't be put on the backs of the poor who have lived and worked in North Hampton all their life. Where's the empathy for those who would lose all their memories to someone's well-to-do dollar? Should we really do this to them? Hard decisions have to be made in business and in life in order to keep things under control. When things get better, people can be rehired, programs can be reinstated, contracts renegotiated. But if you lose your house, it's pretty much gone. I just, and finally, I just feel we shouldn't put the financial problems we are creating on the backs of less fortunate, and I think we could do better than that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Judge. Okay, we're switching out here. Amy Bookbinder first, right?
First of all, I know some of you know I have an eye disorder, and I hope you'll permit me a few extra seconds to read this if I need it. I live on Grove Avenue, but I'm here tonight to discuss the congestion these days at the intersection of classism and racism in this town. First, though, I want to congratulate the City Council President, not just for your new degree, but because of the meaningful way that you shared it with all in this city. So, thank you for that. Before I give a brief update on Jonas Correa's case, a few remarks about something I noticed while I was there at the courthouse this morning for his first court appearance. I noticed that on one side of the street, next to the courthouse, were two benches. Across the benches were metal bars, but there, as I learned recently, which were put there, as I learned recently, to allow people to sit down, but to prevent homeless people from resting there. I took a picture of these benches. As I approached the other side of the street, next to the brand-new, fancy, expensive police station, all along the street there were shiny new long benches with no bars to interfere with anyone's comfort. I took a picture of that, too. But I had to wonder, what are our priorities in this city? Do we, do you, as councilors, want to leave a legacy that's a tale of two cities, or of a city that comes together united to solve our problems and is welcoming to all? As a member of Justice for Jonas, I joined others this morning in court support of Jonas Correa, a young man of color who was violently arrested by some of our officers. And as you know, the DA has dropped the criminal charges against him, finding no grounds for them. However, the police are persisting in the case against him. To summarize, he was given an August appearance date for a trial, but, and I've never seen this happen before, the judge admonished the procedure of the police department bringing the case, saying he feels uncomfortable because the officers have no legal representation. Apparently, no lawyers anywhere in this city, including our own city solicitor, who was asked, are willing to take on this case on behalf of the police, and I think we need to wonder why that is. So I join others, including members of Justice for Jonas and members of the NAACP, in calling for an outside impartial investigation of our police department, for their benefit and for everyone's. And now, as to Benchgate, as it's been called, I'm happy to see that the mayor reversed a bad decision.
I'm sorry. How many more seconds, Amy? There are other people who would probably speak to this point, who probably represent the same thing.
Well, I was just about to thank you.
Oh, well then.
For, and other councillors here, for taking a really strong role in standing up for an inclusive city. And to the council president, a special thank you for joining the disparate angry among us. Touche. Anyway, in closing, I want to support Councilor Carney's resolution. I'm nervous, I'm sorry. And I hope we will have more benches. As the mayor said, there's not enough room for people to sit down. And one more thing, if I may, to finish.
Let's really stretch it.
Although, although I think it takes some chutzpah to be asking people in the city to have their taxes increased forever, and I can barely afford to do that, I am voting yes on the override, and I urge others to do so, because I think it's the right thing to do. And I'm asking you to help design a forum that others will speak to tonight that's open and inclusive and addresses all the issues of downtown, because that's also the right thing to do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Susan Lance, please.
Hi, I'm Susan Lance. I live at 74 Lyme Road, North Hampton, and I seem to have a designation right now of being solar coach for the outstanding program Solarize North Hampton. But in fact, I'm really part of a team of eight-plus community volunteers who are dedicated to seeing this program really work for North Hampton. And I'm here to really personally extend to each and every one of you and your constituents to come to this very important meeting next Thursday at the Senior Center. You all have an invite. It's called Meet the Installer, and our installer is Real Good Solar. And they will outline the program specifics, the cost, and why we are especially excited about this program is that there is an option for those people who might not have $5,000 to $8,000 to outlay immediately for solar panels. There is an option that you can put nothing down upfront, and somebody else owns the panels on your roof, but yet you can benefit from lower electrical cost from what is generated on your roof. So there really can be an option for everybody. So I really encourage you to get the word out to your constituents and have them come. I'm very excited to tell you that we already have two signed contracts under Solarize North Hampton, both of them in Florence. I think we're up to 13K now, and so we have to get up to 200 to meet our fifth tier, but we are going to do it. And I think the state has put together an excellent program in this, and I'm thrilled that North Hampton can be a part of it. It really is a win-win-win situation time in Massachusetts for solar, between the federal and the state tax credits, and then the Massachusetts incentives, and then this is just one more layer of reducing the installation cost for solar panels. So I think it's something that we can all feel good about and add to what's already been done in North Hampton, in very green North Hampton, and help it along for us and for the state. So, hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Vera Dogman? All right, Vera, you're going to have to help me with your middleman. It's a, is it Dwang Mani Cage?
Here, Dwang Mani Cage.
All right. We could have stayed there all night. Thank you. I'm sorry.
From Amherst, Mass., 12 Long Meadow Drive in Amherst. I'm here speaking as a member of the Justice for Jonas Coalition, and just having attended the court proceedings today, I just wanted to share with you that open invitation to join us on Monday, September 9, to be there with Jonas's family and his supporters, to see how this human drama will unfold. This is a tragedy that the saga has not concluded in a happy ending for Jonas at this point, that it continues to get dragged on. And, you know, according to Judge Goggins today, you know, he finds the proceedings, the intended proceedings, curious. You know, who's going to prosecute this case now that the district attorney's office is not pursuing the case? So there's a opportunity for a police officer to act as an attorney. So, like Amy said, the city solicitor, your city solicitor, will not be taking on the role of prosecutor in this case. So what does this mean for the city of North Hampton? And so I ask that you participate in the proceedings to observe what is happening and to say that, you know, there needs to be, as others have called for, an independent review of the police and their actions, not just for Jonas, but for future incidences that will transpire. You know, when the police chief says, "We've done an independent review of the internal independent, internal review of the situation, and we found our actions not to have violated any guidelines," that doesn't sit well with most of us, and that doesn't lend into confidence of the police. And your body, this city council, cares about issues of quality of life for folks, and I just want to see that you care about the quality of life for folks like Jonas, a person of color, who's, has a family and who has kids as well, and who also cares about quality of life. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Barbara Rakaska.
I'm Barbara Rakaska from Florence Road in Florence, and first, I would like to thank the school committee and the search committee for hiring Brian Lombardi as the principal at the high school. They promoted him from assistant principal. And this is something that I'd like to see happen in the city more, promoting from within. Instead of looking outside the city for what might be a best candidate, when we have good people here, and the city saw that. I have noticed in the past, we hire people from the outside because they are the best, but it's a stepping stone for them. They stay a couple of years and they leave, and then the city has to pay money to search again to fill that position, where when you hire from within and promote from within, you are getting someone that's vested in the community. And then the teachers, or whatever job it is, know they have a stepping stone. So I want, I really want to thank the school committee and the search committee for doing that. And he is one of the best candidates for the job. On top of that, I want to talk about the override. I am pushing to no vote on the override. You talk about structural deficit. Families are feeling the same deficit. Salaries are not rising as fast either. And that means that we have to look for ways to live within our means. Not what we want, but what we need, desperately need, and that might mean cutting some things. But that's what we're doing. And I do work for the city, and I have not, I've seen my pay not go up much, but I've also seen a lot of costs coming back to me that I am not going to be able to afford. They say the average home is valued at $297,000, rounded off, and an increase of $234,000 for the year. What about year two, three, and four? And then after that, is there going to be another override? Is this going to happen every four years? I want to reiterate about the renters. I don't think they understand that if their landlords are going to be hit with fees and stuff, their rents are going to go up. And why us? I don't see overrides going in other cities. But are they facing the same cuts as state and federal, as everybody? But they manage to live within their means. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Michael DeHaleen, please.
My name is Michael DeHaleen. I'm elected trustee of Smiths Vocational School in North Hampton. I came here tonight to report out that the last budget hearing, meeting, there was a discussion about our budget in regards to aligning it with the city of North Hampton and the mayor's budget. We heard the council. The trustees went back and line by line went through our budget and have modified it to meet that 1% savings, or amount of $80,431 that was, would be in alignment with the mayor wanted. And this has been presented as of yesterday. A copy was forwarded to the city council president via Mary Madura, and also a copy to Susan Wright, the finance director. The actual budget amendment cannot be voted until next Thursday night, when it is our regular meeting, but it is, this has been approved, authorized, and I wanted to come here personally tonight as the trustee to, one, to give confidence to the council and Smiths Vocational School, and as my charge of being elected city official, to follow that up and make sure that this was handled in the proper manner. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now, your other official duty takes you to the graduation ceremony.
That's correct.
Enjoy, yes, enjoy that a lot more than this.
Thank you.
Chris Shadoian, please.
Since you said please.
Try to be courteous.
Hi, I'm Chris Shadoian. I live at Two Graves Avenue, and I couldn't be here a couple weeks ago to talk about the city's plan to improve the water drainage from Bridge Street School by adding piping from the school to a storm drain on Graves, and more importantly, the language of an easement, allowing this work, because no one on Graves knew about this plan until the day of the council meeting. And that would be understandable except for three things. One is that the plan to improve the school's drainage has been on the books for four years. The plan has been actively worked on for the last year by the Department of Public Works, and most surprising of all, we were not made aware of this long-existing plan after the residents of Graves voiced so much concern about a completely different, not known about in advance, plan involving the same land, that we convinced the city council to table that plan. We weren't told at that point either. And why weren't we made aware of the drainage plan by anybody? Why wasn't the city council, or the city councilor made aware of this plan? Why not three months ago, or when the other plan was tabled? And, you know, we just, we just want to be informed. We just want to know. And I met yesterday with the mayor and with Councilman Daniels, and I've spoken before to the council about this, and I understand the city can't treat every resident as an individual, because you have to deal with tiny side streets like ours and enormous roads like King Street, but I don't think it's too much to ask that Graves residents be informed when substantial city plans are going to impact us directly. You can inform just one of us, because we'll all tell all the rest of us. And I think that this easement issue at hand, which is fairly substantial, is probably going to work out, thanks to a lot of people scrambling, a lot of people putting in a lot of extra time and effort, and that includes city workers whose time ends up badly impacted when things are done this way. And it doesn't have to be like this. You know, Graves Avenue residents go out of our way to work with the city to improve our neighborhood. Arden, if she's here, oh, she's here, is going to speak a little later, about trees that we bought and planted for the city, that will, that some of which will likely be removed when this plan is implemented. We don't really want anything in return, and we don't want to stop the city's improvements. We just want to be part of the process. So problems like this drainage and easement issue, which by the way exists because of poorly planned and implemented engineering at the original Bridge Street School basement area, can possibly be avoided in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Tarantino, please.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the city council. With regard to the override, I think there's this mentality about, well, it's $235 for the average person. What's the big deal? That's less than a dollar a day. So I'd like for you to look at it the way I look at it. If you leave here this evening and on your way home, you get pulled over by a police officer, and you get written a citation for $235, what is your reaction to that going to be? Now, that's an amount that you didn't choose, and, you know, really, it doesn't matter whether you're doing anything wrong or not. What matters is you got 20 days to pay it, or your problems are only going to get worse. So if you somehow have this warm and fuzzy feeling that, well, the government needs the money more than I do, and I'm therefore happy to pay the $235 fine, then you miss the point, because the whole purpose of the government doing that is to punish you. That's a sanction for wrongdoing. That's a penalty and a punishment that you don't do it again. So when it comes to whether you're paying a traffic fine, or whether you're paying an increased tax bill, it's still coming from your same account. It's still an amount that you didn't choose. It's really, it is quite a burden. I mean, and for those people who think that, you know, well, the city needs this more than I do. Well, next time you're driving down, and you're driving down the street, and you feel guilty that you have money in your account the city would rather have, and you'd rather have them spend it, because they'll spend it on something more, you know, useful and more efficiently, then if you see that police officer, why don't you go ahead and deliberately speed up and get pulled over and written a ticket? Because that's certainly an option, if you want to transfer your money to the government. And if that seems ridiculous, I suggest to you, ladies and gentlemen, that that makes a lot more sense than voting for the override, because that ticket is a one-time fee. The override is for the rest of your life, as long as you live in North Hampton. Your only way of getting out under the override is by moving out of North Hampton or by passing away. In the next 10 years, $235 is going to be $2,350. This yes vote is going to cost you, this one vote, one time, is going to end up costing you thousands of dollars. you thousands of dollars, and that's directly. Indirectly, if you appreciate the power of compound interest, that will become the base of whatever other override they want in the next ten years. This is our chance to really kind of, for all of us, to say what's important. And I think that the city, they really, they want to be first in line. We need the money, whether you need to work on your heating, whether you need to work on your plumbing, that's your problem. We need your money first. And I really strongly urge everybody to think about the impact this has on your neighbors and to vote no on the override. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie Brill.
First, I want to commend the city council for finding money and switching the money from the ambulance fees that was in a kind of a private fund to the general fund. Thank you very much. It should be. I'd like to commend also Mayor Narcoitz for finding money in some of these very little networks, either old boys, old girls, in the last hurry that he's been here. But there's still some more money to be found, okay? Let me give you an example. So Smithville has one superintendent for four hundred and fifty students. That superintendent makes a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Why is that, okay? We have a superintendent that resides over six schools. That's three teaching jobs, by the way, or one teaching job and two police officer jobs. Plus, in the budget, which I read the other day, there's an appropriation after ninety-two thousand more dollars for Smithville, when the receipts are already five million, three hundred and forty-six thousand. Why is that ninety-two thousand dollars there? That's two more teaching jobs. So now we have five teaching jobs that we can restore, okay? Then there's the capital improvement committee is recommending one million, seven hundred and nineteen thousand for buildings, equipment, vehicles, technology. And I keep hearing this, buildings, technology, boathouses, you know? Maybe the Smithville kids could build the boathouse as a project with Jay Wright giving pro bono help, okay? In other words, there's too much money being spent on this town for things that aren't priorities. Now, another one is the part, I don't know if this capital improvement committee thing is separate from the parking meter revenues, which are estimated on the new budget on page three or four, at one million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And these are paying for police salaries, city officials' salaries, and vehicles, police vehicles. Are these three new SUVs? Or are we going to use the same SUVs, or what? Or maybe we're going to use the three SUVs when we cancel the busing to the high school, and the SUVs can make trips to Leeds and Florence Center to bus all the kids to school, so they don't not go to school and drop out? In other words, this budget needs a thorough cleaning and going over, and this city needs to think about buildings, boathouses being more important than the sons and daughters in the city. And the teachers who bust our butts and have given back time and time again. And we're not going to get a raise here, that's obvious. We're trying to save our jobs, for Christ's sake. So I want you to think about that. But in terms of the override, which is for us, I kind of agree with a lot of people are saying, but I would recommend that there be a waiver for low-income senior citizens. And a waiver that people can actually fill out without feeling they're drowning in a barrel of red tape. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Captain Jean LeFrance, please.
Good evening. I'm Jean LeFrance from Three Ten Colesman Road. Years ago, a wise and successful person gave me some advice. Money talks, and bovine organic fertilizer walks. Since this city's government should not be in the organic fertilizer business, why is it resorting to scare tactics and misrepresentation of the facts regarding its alleged financial crisis and its demand for another two-point-five-million-dollar Proposition Two and a Half override? Why isn't this city's government being honest and truthful with its ten thousand, six hundred and eighty-two property-owning taxpayers, its nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three registered voters, and its twenty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three citizens? Over three months ago, this city's government announced a one-point-four-million-dollar shortfall in its projected two, twenty-thirteen fiscal budget, and demanded a Proposition Two and a Half override to cover that alleged deficit, or it would lay off twenty-five teachers and five police officers. A month ago, the city upped its demands to two-and-a-half-million-dollar Proposition Two and a Half override, not just for one year, but forever. It now threatens to lay off ten teachers and five police officers if it doesn't get its demanded two-and-a-half-million-dollar-a-year override forever. Yet while crying poverty and an empty treasury within the last two months, this city's government has spent four hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars to purchase less than eighty acres of totally worthless wilderness off Colesman Road, and has agreed to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete a bike path from Leeds to Wintersburg. These two expenditures alone represent at least fifteen teacher and police positions. Why isn't this city's government telling its property-owning taxpayers and registered voters that the two thousand thirteen fiscal budget also includes one-point-five-million dollars for the removal of the dam in Leeds? Before that project can even begin, countless permits will have to be applied for, approved, and received. Not one of those permits has yet to be received by the city's government. If the Leeds dam is not removed during the fiscal next year, the city will not have a one-point-four-million-dollar shortfall in its operating budget. It will actually have a one-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus. Two, the city is not telling its taxpayers and general public that the federal government will be refunding one million dollars of that Leeds dam project. In recent years, this city's government has called for more tax overrides than any other city or town in this state. Just two-and-a-half years ago, taxpayers and registered voters rendered the city two-million-dollar override for a new PlayStation. For heaven's sakes, that construction project isn't even finished yet, and the city is now demanding another two-and-a-half-million-dollar proposition override, not just for one year, but forever.
Captain? You'll have an opportunity to expand on these comments in just a few minutes, as soon as we're done with public comment, but the three minutes has expired. And I appreciate your time, and if you stick around, you could, as I said, you can go on as long as you want, and we'll be able to answer, actually. That's another thing, that'll be different from the public comment section.
Can I pay Consular Tacey a compliment?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, we went over to get me a compliment, we'll go over to get him a compliment, too.
I'd like to thank Consular Tacey for trying to represent his constituency honestly, truthfully, objectively, conservatively. But I feel in this ballgame, that man is out in rough right field all alone, while the rest of this government is so far out left, it's beyond that green giant wall in Fenway Park. God bless you, Consular Tacey, and God bless what's left of this republic, that is the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Arden Pierce, please.
Hi, I'm Arden Pierce, and I live at Forty-two Graves Avenue. So I'm speaking in reference to the easement. And I just wanted to speak specifically about the trees. We did have a meeting with the lead engineer from the DPW and the central services director. And we saw maps of their plan, and they said that there's a very large canopy of trees, right where, just to the side of, barely to the side of where the drainage would be going in. So there's a lot of, there's twenty-two adult trees that are at risk in this project. And according to the plan, there was only, I think, around four to six trees that would be coming down. But they couldn't say if others would come down, or if others were at risk. So this canopy of trees really provides a very important environmental factor on the street, and it would be a massive loss to lose as many as twenty, the whole canopy? It's quite a bit. So my concern is with that. And there's also two trees that are in the median of the, on the street itself, that are at risk and as well. So this city, those are city trees that are at risk, and they were purchased by, they were purchased at great expense. And there's no mention in our meeting, or what we understand about the easement, whether the tree, the city trees would be replaced? Or there was mention of replacing trees within the tree belt that was the area that was adjacent to the historical society and the parking lot, that's one of the abutters of Graves Avenue. So this is a concern I have, and during the meeting that we had for the walkthrough, the walkthrough with the, with the central service director, he said that there would be somebody present during the project to oversee all this digging up in the tree vulnerability. And I just want to be sure that the words that the central services director said, that there, in fact, there'll be somebody from the city really overseeing, because my understanding is that there are people, people come from outside, the contractors who do all the digging, they won't really care about the plans, and that way more trees may come down than, than what has been stated. So that is just the comment I make, that I really hope someone is there from the city supervising this, and that I would like to hear more of what, how the trees would be replaced that are the city trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Elizabeth Royalty.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Royalty. I live at Five King Avenue in Florence. I'm here because on May eighth of this year, the DPW voted not to recommend King Avenue to be accepted as a public street, and ordered the Department of Public Works to cease snow and ice removal for fiscal year 2014. The residents of King Avenue have been really involved in this from the beginning, as soon as we were made aware that the petitions had been submitted and that the city council had referred it over to the Department of Public Works. Mainly, we've been really involved because we had no idea that we were at risk of having our public services stopped. For some of us, such as my husband and I, when we purchased our property less than five years ago, we had absolutely no idea that this was not a public street. And we, since we've been living there, it has been maintained by the city. And so when we heard that we were at risk of having city services of any kind, whether it be snow and ice removal, and I don't know what would happen with sewer and road maintenance, when we heard that those were at risk, we became involved, and so we attended the Department of Public Works meeting. I spoke there, but they ultimately voted not to recommend our street to be accepted by city council. And so we are asking city council to use its power, which is the only real power in this situation, to just vote to accept our street as a public way. As I stated, the city has been providing essential services on our roadway for as long as the residents can remember. It was suggested to us that we form some sort of homeowners association for the residents on that street to pay for these services. This is problematic and, I think, unfair. A, because we did not go into this property purchase thinking that we had to buy into a homeowners association in order to maintain the road that we thought was public. Also, we are concerned about the unwillingness of some property owners on the street. Mainly, there are multifamily units that are actually owned by someone who lives in California. So negotiating with them just brings up the practical difficulties residents like us would have of trying to form some enforceable homeowners association to maintain the property. So I don't have a lot to say. I did write an eight-page memorandum that was attached to some of the materials. I have no idea if anybody tortured themselves in reading it. But I hope that you at least take a look over it, because we just want you to realize that there are historical reasons why we are where we are, and there are actual practical impacts for the residents of these streets that are really serious. It may seem small in the context of the entire public, but it's really, really large to us. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Do you have a copy of that you could leave?
We have a copy.
I didn't, okay, thank you. Jason Benson, please.
Good evening. I'm Jason Benson, also live at Five King Avenue. I'm going to be talking about the public-private way issue, just like my wife. On May eighth, we went to the BPW meeting, where you just heard we were rejected for public street status. We went home pretty disappointed, not sure how much money this was going to cost us. Was getting pretty concerned about it. About thirty minutes later, I received a phone call. It was a local volunteer who I happened to know, and she was calling to ask for my support for the override. And I thought that was pretty funny. And I said to her, I was planning on it, but I'm not sure how much this is going to be costing me. And I have a feeling every single person that lives on the private ways that are being rejected right now, they're probably thinking the exact same thing. You know, how much money is the ice and snow removal going to be for me? And with the override on top of that, we're talking like, I don't know. I mean, it depends on what road you live on. For our particular road, I haven't even priced it yet, but... So I told her the same situation, and she provided, and then some sympathy, but, you know, she was calling for her own purpose. And I received an interesting email the next day. It was actually emailed to Mr. Tacey. And I just wanted to read a couple of passages from this email. Should just take a moment. So in the first paragraph, she states, "Some of my Ward Seven neighbors will be shoveling the streets while the city plows will be maintaining the roads on either sides of them. I guess when I wanted to take a walk down the block on the next snow day, that we had better bring our shovels and ice cleats in case our friends are snowed in. The city has acted as though it was a public way by providing snow and ice removal, maintenance, and general upkeep for years. I'm not sure when this precedent was set, possibly as early as the eighteen-seventies, Homestead, when Homestead was developed. I think this is information that would be valuable to know before buying a home and setting down roots, the largest financial and psychological investment many people will make in their lives. What if the residents of King Avenue, or any of the fifty or so public versus private ways in question, are on a fixed income, elderly, or otherwise unable to plow or maintain their roads? Many of the streets were never accepted as public ways for unexplained reasons. Would you agree with me that we owe our fellow Ward Seven citizens a better-than-unexplained reasons?" Thank you.
Thank you. It's okay. Happens all the time. Ruth Ann Mahone, please.
Good evening. I'm here to ask the council to consider naming King Avenue a street. And I have the following to say. At the age of nine in nineteen thirty-seven, I moved with my family to Myrtle Street, now named Bardwell, to property of King Avenue. In nineteen fifty-one, my husband and I built a home at the end of King Avenue. Since moving into our home in January of nineteen fifty-two, the city has constructed two roads, with the last one including new sewer and water- with the last one including new sewer and water lines and a new service sewer. The last road was a major production, which included removing and replacing my fence in order to park the heavy equipment on my front lawn. It was a wonderful year for me. When I applied for a permit to build on King Avenue, the city building inspector told me King Avenue was no longer a private way as it had never legally been closed to traffic. It was city-owned. As the city continued to construct new roads on the avenue, sweep and plow the street, and clean the service sewers, I think the average homeowner would have considered the statement to be true. Now, a BPW committee of my so-called peers tells me the previous administrators of the city of Northampton have made very poor decisions, and we are trying to correct them. Their solution is to correct the supposed poor decisions by previous administrators at the expense of the current taxpayers on King Avenue by denying them the right to be a city street. Having paid taxes on this property for seventy-six years, I find their recommendation is unjust, and being critical of previous administrators is certainly not a good image for the city of Northampton. I have, in closing, I have two, one question and one remark. If the city does not own King Avenue, who does? In an article in the Boston Globe that quotes the city solicitor, Mark Rumley of Medford, Mass., as saying, "Some people will say to you that as an abutter, you own to the middle of the way. Ask them to go to the assessor's office and see if the additional footage into the middle of the street is on their tax bill. I can tell you it is not." So who owns the street? The other comment on, in the same thing from the Boston Globe, "The only disadvantage to living on a private street here is the condition of the road. It can be poor, in most cases it has no sidewalk. And if it rains, there are no storm drains. You might want a four-wheel drive if you're living there." This is not true of King Avenue. We are one of the better streets in the city. And I really plead with you to accept this as a city street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Katie, I can't tell, it looks like you're next, I guess. Katie Simon, please. Oh, Wayne is, there, there's just some arrows here all over the place, so I'm not sure.
Um, my name is Katie Simon. I live in Holyoke, but I lived in Northampton for seven or eight years. And I think that I represent a good amount of Northampton constituents, given how many people, hundreds of people, participated on Facebook organizing pages against the bench removal in the past couple of weeks. Firstly, I want to thank the City Council for their near-unanimous recommendation to the mayor to restore the benches, especially Counselor Carney, Counselor Dwight, and Counselor Adams. This is the second time in four or five years that the Business Improvement District, since its formation in two thousand and nine, has taken active steps to try to drive those asking, those people asking for survival money out of town. I was active the first time when during the end of two thousand and eight, to inaugurate the formation of the BID. It proposed, the people who would then form the BID proposed legislation before City Council that would have de facto criminalized panhandling, despite the fact that asking for survival money is protected free speech, ruled to be so on state and federal levels. Only numerous protests and expressions of public outrage managed to shame them into withdrawing this bill from City Council consideration. That time, the BID proposed this in spite of both the First and Fourteenth Amendments, which both protect the needy's right to ask for money. This time, the BID urged the mayor to act for them in spite of democratic process, in spite of concerns about the ableist side effects of their decision, which would hurt both the elderly, not both, the elderly, pregnant mothers, the disabled, and children. They also urged the mayor to act despite the circumvention of democratic process implicit in that action. No, the City Council was not consulted, nor were any non-business owning citizens. The BID was so eager in its classist aims that we actually reportedly heard that they hired prison day labor to remove the benches as quickly as possible, not being able to wait for the Department of Public Works to accomplish this task. We should have expected this. After all, the BID lists the classist goal of curbing panhandling on its website in the category of public safety. Who's public safety? Statistically, homeless people, vulnerable as they are, are much more likely to be victims of violence, while middle-class people are much more likely to be hurt by people they know intimately. Creating violent bogeymen out of the poor is absurd. Yeah, stupid me.
We'll give you credit. Go ahead, you got.
There are already laws against things like harassment. Why do class specific measures have to be taken? As for this discomfort people report feeling at the very sight of those asking for money in need, the discomfort is a sign of the viewer's humanity, and our response to that should not be to wipe away the sight of those human beings in order to ease people's consciousness and create a more marketable downtown. Okay, I have one more sentence. See, that was another message the BID sent by removing the benches. Don't linger, keep shopping. But we maintain that our public square is not a mall, and that it belongs to, not only to consumers, but to diverse citizens in community. Oh, sorry, just one more sentence. And given the dearth of shelter space, the average year-long waiting list for public housing, the lack of easy access to free food, especially given food not bombs, you know, being driven out of town over the past four years, then coming back, the human rights abuse accusations against service organizations like ServiceNet, what exactly do they expect people to do?
Thank you very much. Wayne Stanley, please.
Hi, I'm Wayne Stanley. I was a longtime resident of Northampton, going back to when people used to call it Hamp. I moved out because I was priced out. And I also want to talk about the, the whole benches issue, because I think we have to go beyond just what the removal of the benches was, and look at the whole process that was involved, how the decision was made, and the politics behind it. And I think it sets a disturbing precedent. Because as everyone knows, the mayor and some members of the Northampton bid in the Chamber of Commerce got together and decided the benches would go. Katie talked about the reasons why. And it was overtly stated that the reason was to eliminate, or at least curb, voidering and panhandling. I think we have to understand, number one, that Northampton is not a mall. It's not private property where the Constitution doesn't apply. The Supreme Court has repeatedly held that public streets, sidewalks, and parks are, in their words, "the quintessential public forms." Elected officials, whether the mayor, City Council, or anyone who oversees such areas, must not only allow, but must be proactive in assuring free speech for everyone. The mayor said in a statement to WWLP that getting rid of the benches was a quick solution to aggressive panhandling, though this has been recognized, as Katie said, as a form of free speech under both state and federal law. So no matter what you personally think, or anyone personally thinks, about an individual asking for money, or maybe Planned Parenthood collecting signatures on the sidewalk, or Oxfam America asking for donations, or socialists selling newspapers on the sidewalk, or a school soccer team fundraising, all these are protected legal activities in public spaces. And the Northampton bid is just one example of the city government giving private business a special status to administer those public spaces. And I'd just like to get three questions for the mayor and for all elected officials. What other quick solutions would you propose to curtail free speech or any other constitutionally protected activity if you were asked to do so by the private business interests? How much public space is the mayor or any elected official willing to hand over to the control of private business interests? And how much public space, which essentially is our space, are we willing to tolerate being privatized and being controlled by unelected, unaccountable, private business interests? Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the people who signed up. Is there someone else who'd like to speak? Yes, in the back, and then Marty, you can go afterwards.
Hi, my name is Jen Bernesh Stiles, and I live at sixty-three Ridgewood Terrace. I came up this evening to express my support for the override. As a parent, I have volunteered in numerous classrooms at Jackson Street School, and I've been privileged to observe carefully orchestrated science lessons, skits and plays written and performed by students, and entire classrooms transformed into desert and rainforest habitats. How will teachers conduct such elaborate projects with significant increase in class size? I've also watched my bright sixth grader, I'm sorry, this is hard for me, continue to be challenged academically and musically at JFK by her talented hybrid husky team of teachers, as well as Clarion Williams, her extraordinary band director. Ms. Williams' job is on the chopping block unless we can get enough yes votes, and that is just unacceptable. Finally, I'm a speech and language pathologist, and I've experienced firsthand how well children with special needs can be assisted and accommodated when a school is appropriately staffed. While working for another city, I've also witnessed the needs of students being neglected in schools with high teacher-student ratios. Let's keep the quality of special education services high in Northampton. With special, regular, and music education in mind, I urge you to vote yes on June twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty, you had your end up next, and then.
I just wanted to echo what was just said. This is a very, very hard time for the city because we have been cut from all directions. And property tax is not a good way to go. It's a regressive tax. And the complaints that people are giving here tonight, I really, they have to be listened to. But our children are our future, and we must maintain the public space, like people talking about the benches were saying. And the major public space that this city is responsible for is the schools. That is, that is the most important. We have to pass this override in order to maintain art, music, all the things that our, our children need, and to maintain proper class sizes, and to maintain a police force that defends people, although sometimes the police definitely do make mistakes. Thank you for pushing this. I hope everybody in the city thinks thought very carefully about this and what do they want in Northampton to be in the future. That's a lot.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lily Gave. I own two houses in Center Court, and I'm asking to reconsider the notion of allowing a downtown, commercial, historic, and unique city neighborhood to remain a private way in this day and age where it doesn't make any sense. It is a very nice mix of residents and businesses. We have an average of a hundred pedestrians using Center Court every day. The condition of the street is an abomination. It was really ironic when I had fire one of my buildings hit by lightning several years ago that I was mandated by code to make sure that it was accessible in every way, which I was happy to do, and thank goodness had the insurance coverage to do. But I just shiver and quake at the idea of anybody even able people trying to negotiate our street because the conditions are such an abomination. We have no drainage, the city plowed at whim, and mostly myself and Julie Andrus would call and beg them, even when they were agreeing to do it. I was not at the DPW meeting on the eighth of May. I was at the planning board meeting. I thought maybe one of us should show up there and do some listening. And it was very interesting and disappointing because, number one, they were to a person really aggravated with having even to consider something that they thought had nothing to do with their purpose in the city. They also were unbelievably disrespectful and disparaging of Center Court in particular, and a lot of the other streets up for consideration. One person said it was nothing but a parking lot, which is just not true. We're very, very conscientious about keeping it safe and patrolling, and I myself have everybody who has a legitimate parking space have a sticker, and we all are watchdogs for each other. The idea of the ID then imposing more money on us is additionally insulting because we get more nothing with nothing for which we pay more. So on behalf of the many pedestrians who have often twisted ankles and come into my office with their pants legs soaked up to the knee because of puddles that maybe could become the river Styx, on behalf of people who do park there legitimately, whose cars suffer a lot of damage because, as I said, there's no drainage, there's no repair. And on behalf of the nature of this unique little downtown community, I ask that you respect its status in two thousand and thirteen to be a public street.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak? Mr. Coleman. Yep. And who else?
Sadia in the back.
Sadia's in the back.
David Corbett, Ford Elteris. You've got a lot more to look forward to than Proposition Two and a Half override. Stormwater runoff.
Yeah, tell me about that.
That's been, gonna be coming up for you. Anyway, congratulations on your certificate. I got mine forty years ago. But I'm talking about the override. I ran into this woman. I, I won't describe her because it would only be an insult. She insulted me because she said I didn't care about our future generations because I was carrying a no sign, no override. I was carrying it because I worry about housing. What one person pays for a rent for a house for a year in Northampton, just for an apartment, it goes for about twelve to fourteen hundred now. Twelve to fourteen hundred dollars. That in a year is half the cost that I paid for my first house back in the seventies. And that was taxes included for a couple of years. I have a neighbor now, there's an absentee landlord, lives in Boston. There is at least four vehicles parked in the street constantly, and then I don't know how many more are associated with it. The reason I can tell that they're there is they're parked in the wrong direction. People on our street now are going over to Lyman Road. They're halfway down. Monroe Street's the next one to get invaded with vehicles from our street because people can't park. This is all associated with rent increases. You know, we worry about the future generations. What are they going to pay for rent? How many jobs do we have in Northampton now that will support a twelve or fourteen hundred dollar a month? You're gonna have to talk three, four people living there in one apartment? It's gonna be pretty overcrowded, and it's gonna get dangerous. You're gonna see people in attics, you're gonna see people in basements. It's gonna be a hell of a hazard. It's not good. You know, narrow-minded Peggy there, she was a yes person. Why don't you think about the whole picture? You know, now you're taking money away from the state. Counsel Adams wants to keep the money here. What if we all did that? What the hell would we do for the people of Springfield to rebuild? The Boston bombing, who would pay for the ten thousand plus first responders? We're gonna stop paying the federal government. Who's gonna pay for the people out in Oklahoma that are being devastated by tornadoes? You know, this is the United States of America, and we live in a common wealth. Let's start thinking a little bit. You have preschool. You have preschool in the schools now. A few years ago, you didn't even have full-day kindergarten. Now free, full-day kindergarten and preschool that is done by lottery. They don't have equal opportunity, these kids. The hell's going on? Where's that money come from? I know the state just cut out a bunch of money for the schools, for preschool, for early childhood. I understand with the police department, we picked up the Quinn bill when the state said we're not going to give you any more money, which was a good thing, I think. But be honest, forthcoming, and say this is the reason. We have a meals tax that you just approved. Where the hell'd that go? Have a good night.
Thank you. Really let the camel's nose under the tent with letting one person run over just so, and I'm allowing that, but is there someone else would like to speak? There are a few people. Dennison, you can go first and then we'll move through.
I apologize for extending your night, but there's a couple of things that feel like I don't want to go by. One is, if anybody feels like they had a bad week, I'm a Quaker who works at Smith-Vogue.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dennison Wolf, one Isabella Street. I want to thank the DPW for having the hearing and recommending acceptance of Isabella Street in the middle of the street one morning. That was convenient and thank you. Thanks to Commissioner Freeman Daniels, Commissioner Adams for coming to the dessert potluck last Sunday. Appreciate having you in the neighborhood, Ward Three. Thanks, Ms. Carney, Mr. Murphy, and Ms. LeBarge for pointing our superintendent in the right direction last week when he wasn't necessarily making himself clear. As a city employee, at least one year and I think twice, I didn't get my step. That's a permanent tax on my income, not a two percent on my property. So I hope the override passes and I imagine that it will. Thanks.
Thank you. Who's up next? Who would like to speak next? Sit in the back.
So, good evening. My name is Sadia Chevin and I live at A Cosmean Avenue in Florence. I'm here tonight to encourage you to give strong support for the public schools in this year's budget. As a sophomore at Northampton High School, I've already been a witness to the effects of the cuts that have been forced upon the school despite having only been there for two years. Over the past few years, the average class size at the high school has gone from twenty-five students to, it's heading towards thirty students within the next few years. And I was actually speaking to Jen in the back there and her daughter is currently in sixth grade at JFK and for her daughter, this, it's very likely if this override doesn't pass and we don't get the funding, that she, her daughter will be in classes with thirty kids all day. And the problem with that is that it's putting more strain on the teacher to give individual time for each student, but you have more students, so it's more difficult to give the help that, to each student that he or she needs. And also, the teacher has to spend more time grading work, so there's less diligence towards that. It's just, I've seen what happens to teachers with big classes. It's not a nice thing and I really feel sorry for them that they're going to, that they're facing this. And our teachers are great at really handling this, but I think it's time for no more. Also, I personally, I've had, last semester, I had two classes that were twenty-five or more students and one class that was thirty-two students, actually. And I was speaking with Nancy Athas today, the principal of the high school, and she said that my English class next year, she already knows, that's going to be more than thirty students because all of the AP Junior English classes are thirty students, or over thirty students, and that's what I signed up for. So that's already a definite and part of that is these budget cuts that we've been facing. So that's before you get to saving the arts. And part of the reason that this problem of large classes is getting bigger is that with the arts classes gone, that's actually a good chunk of the classes, no matter how large or small they are, you're having, you're getting more students added into the, you have more students entering into the other classes, so that's going to increase class size in general. And also, for me personally, I started taking arts classes this semester, probably a good idea, and I realized how much I really enjoy them. They really allow you, they let you be creative, they let you express yourself, and I don't want that to go away suddenly for me. So I'd just like to say this override's very important for the high school, for the schools in general, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Going once, or twice?
I have a question. How does one add written material to your record?
Just submit it to the secretary and it'll be introduced into the public record for the day. We're going to, I'm going to ask the, actually. Okay, so I'm asking the secretary to call a roll to determine the quorum.
Council Adams?
Here.
Council Carney?
President.
Council White?
Here.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Here.
Council LeBarge?
President.
Council Murphy?
Here.
Here.
First up, I'm going to read the published notice. This is under the new charter that we're required to do this. The following public hearing is hereby advertised in accordance with the Charter of Northampton, Massachusetts, Article VII, Finance and Fiscal Procedures, Section seven dash four, Action on the Operating Budget, A, a public hearing. By the order of the City Council, public hearing be held on Thursday, June sixth, two thousand and thirteen, at seven oh five P.M. We're fudging the time a little bit here. In the City Council chambers located in the walls, J. Pachowski Municipal Building, two twelve Main Streets, Northampton, Massachusetts. The City Council will consider the proposed FY two thousand and fourteen budget and hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. So, we are convening, excuse me, we do have a quorum, we're going to convene this hearing. The, as I stated before and I'll repeat, that the public's invited to discuss items on the budget. I understand things like the benches and things like that are of critical importance, but the fact is, if, we prefer to keep it on the budget. The override is not an unreasonable conversation to be had because it's a prospect, but the fact is, we're not necessarily in the room to hear, to debate the pros and cons of the override between the councilors and the, and the, and the public. I mean, I would prefer that we talk about the impacts that the override would have on the budget one way or the other. So if, absent the override, which is the current budget that we're discussing, and then if you're inclined, you can also talk about the prospects of the budget as it impacts us going forward if the override does pass. So what, again, what I ask you to do is raise your hand, excuse me, and I'll call you and then please identify yourself. You may have been identified once already, but then, and, and your address, and Jeff, you're first, and then, and Mr. Tarantino, you're next. So Jeff, step on up.
All right. So what is it? I can just kind of ask you guys questions?
Exactly. We're now allowed to talk back.
Woo-hoo!
Yes, and so you just identify yourself and your address, please.
Sorry. Jeff Massimino, thirty-four Ford Hill Terrace. And one thing I'm kind of curious about, I was reading through the city budget, I haven't had time to read through the whole thing yet, but page four, this is something Ernie Brill touched on, one million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred forty-nine dollars for high priority investments and recommended by committee. And my first question, you know, what committee? Who's on the committee? What items specifically? And the most important question I would have is, do we really need this stuff or can we get by with the old stuff for a while longer?
Does anyone want to take that in particular? I mean, I don't know if I should.
Could you, on page four?
Page four. At least, it's in the PDF.
The narrative or the?
Maybe on three? All right, because I'm getting on my computer, might be different than that, I don't know.
Mr. President?
Yes.
May I recommend that, just to keep things flowing, that the presenters put out everything they want to talk about?
All at once?
Yes, please.
Do you have other things you want to touch on too, Jeff?
Because I know that this, this part is, is, I mean, I'll answer it for you.
Oh, absolutely.
The capital plan, page two oh one to page two eleven, and I, we have a member who sits on the capital plan here, Capital Improvements Committee, that can speak to each issue, each issue and each item, but I think it's better if we.
Yeah, oh, no, absolutely. That's.
So, yeah, so going forward, the preference would be to front-load your comments and questions and then we'll try to answer them accordingly.
I guess the only other thing I was noticing, I can't remember exactly what part of this is, but the cuts to schools, it doesn't give any specifics really, like what exactly are we proposing to cut? You know, and my suggestion to you guys, me being poor, I would think like a poor person. I mean, I'm used to scrimping and saving and going, well, you know, I'd like to buy a new thing here, but I'm going to put off for a little while because, you know, moss flying out of my pockets, I'm broke. And that's just the best thing I can really tell you guys, and I wish I had more than that. I'm going to try and go through the whole city budget and there's a few of you I want to sit down with personally. That's pretty much it. I would really scrutinize that one million, seven hundred nineteen thousand, seven hundred forty-nine and ask yourselves.
Okay, well, if, if you allow, you're welcome to stay up.
Well, I don't want to take up too much time.
No, well, I mean, it's, there were questions. They had a question mark at the end, so there's, I know that Council Freeman Daniels wants to speak to it and Council Schwartz and possibly Council Murphy, so.
Yeah, thank you. This is, the capital improvement plan is, actually, I have the page open, it starts on two oh one, and it really is a, it's funded with this sort of a hodgepodge of monies. On two oh two, you see different revolving funds and some old money that was never used, some free cash which could be used for any purpose. What I think is telling is that the estimated value of all the capital needs that the committee reviewed was thirty-six million. And I'm not saying that, you know, that would make, that would make the city a sort of shiny new, you know, Colorado city or something like that, but.
Painted with gold and stuff.
Well, just at least.
Eight.
Level, yes. But, but I think that when we did pass the capital improvements plan earlier this year, and again, I can't defend, I wasn't on the subcommittee, but what I can say is that it was, it was relatively modest, given the needs that we have. And I also want to, and I, people often think that I'm against the mayor for this or that reason, but really I'm not. I want to applaud the mayor for his conservatism regarding the, the capital plan. He managed to find money in different places that, in old accounts and so on. And, you know, some of these, you might wonder about particular things. I mean, you might wonder about, you know, a truck or something like that, that, the same thing that an earlier person commented on. But each of them have their own replacement schedules, so it's mostly, you can sort of try to keep up with that schedule. And I know that the other councilors who are ever on the capital improvements plan, committee can speak more knowledgeably than I can. But I do know that this is a pretty modest capital plan and we do try to put money aside for capital improvements every year, even in tight years, so that we don't have these big expenditures hit us, you know, like the bump in the rug, sort of, you don't put, you keep the rug lumpy, you know, you don't get one big bump.
Council Schwartz, who are next if you wanted to, or Council Murphy? I don't know.
If you're attending to this issue, then I can attend to the school issue.
Okay, well, just, I chair capital improvements and I want you to know this, this is a very pared-on list from those that are presented to us. And capital improvements is very different from our operating money. This is only to replace facilities and vehicles and things of that nature. And I'm happy to go through some of you, some of these and let you know why they made it this far from the list. The Parking Maintenance Department wants to replace a two thousand and three pickup truck that they plow with and, I mean, ten years for a truck in this climate with a plow on it is an amazing lifespan.
How many miles are on it?
I have no, I don't have that information with me here, but I have a plow truck and it's amazing that it makes it ten years. That's a very nasty life for a plow truck. Firescapes on the Academy of Music, can't use the building if it's passed fire safety.
I worked there for eight years, yeah. That was an issue when I was there.
Yeah, it has been. The high school, since we did the addition, didn't have the fluids in its heating system changed. It needed its fluids changed. There was a sinkhole in the parking lot at the high school. We kind of needed to fix that before it started eating cars and students. The technology plan, what are computers good for, three to five? We try and replace those on a revolving basis. A roof repair at the Ryan Rhodes School. A boiler at Smith-Vogue. A system to lift ambulances into, or people into ambulances on stretchers, that helps keep firemen from being out injured on duty from lifting large people into ambulances. It definitely pays off. Some of the other things, tactical equipment for the police department, their environmental stuff they keep in their cars has been expired for several years. Should they ever need that stuff, you really, you feel good as a police officer going into a hazardous material environment and when you open the package, it expired five years ago, you don't feel real good about that. A handicapped accessible entrance to the Forbes Library, handicapped people really deserve the right to go into the library, so we need to do that.
Do you believe, or is the city matching the money for that or are they raising it all themselves? I know the.
When you, when you look at the very front of the capital plan, it talks about its sources. Actually, only a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is actually cash in. There was some free cash left over from the budget last year. We'll bond a million dollars of this. Ninety thousand comes from the Fire Department revolving fund to help with those. Parking receipts probably are being used on the parking vehicles and some of the police vehicles. And reprogram from completed capital projects, sixty-two thousand, which would have been from capital projects from, say, the previous year, money that wasn't spent because we were fortunate enough to complete those projects for less than the money we budgeted for them. But please rest assured, the smallest of things we actually funded, you know, we funded a million seven out of a ninety million dollar budget. This was stuff, this was the important stuff we really needed to do because it protected buildings, it protected lives, you know, it was things like sinkholes, furnaces, roofs.
I will make my own suggestion. I'm a few things. I'm a mechanic, computer technician, I also teach math at college. Computers, if you absolutely have to, the biggest thing to replace in them is the hard drive. You can get away with probably a few more years. I don't know what the overall expense on that is, but that's, just throwing that out.
It's a, what this was, was a contribution to a revolving capital plan and then they pick and choose which devices in their system are the most antiquated and need to be dealt with. So while we don't know exactly at capital improvements, what items they're replacing, we gave them a total amount towards all of the technology in the schools and then they can pick and choose where they think it's most needed. You know, we don't micromanage to that level.
Can I, can I just say, just tag on to the Forbes thing? That was a question, that's a question I have as well, actually, and, and we're going to hear from Forbes next Tuesday, I believe, so regarding the lift.
The lift?
So I'm not sure.
I knew it needed to be replaced because it's.
And may I also, just because I received a solicitation from a volunteer at Forbes Library, that there is, there is an active campaign going on to, to fund that project, looking for.
A hundred thousand already or something like that, doing pretty well.
I don't know what they've raised so far, but they're actively soliciting funds from the general public for that project.
Council Schwartz.
So, yeah, I just wanted to address your question around what exactly are, will be lost from the schools if the override fails? So first, let me just say that information is publicly available through the school committee, but I'm happy to condense it right here for you. We, it'll be, it's roughly eleven full-time equivalent school staff positions and what that includes is the reduction of physical education at the elementary level, the elimination of a music teacher and cut, reduction of an art teacher at the middle school, which will prevent middle school students from having the opportunity for art and music for all three years at the school. They will not have it for one, three years. Significant reduction in art, music, theater, and consumer science teaching positions at the high school, resulting in the potential loss of marching band, choral programs, theater productions, and more. The reduction of special education, school psychological services, speech assistance, and other supportive services at every school level. The reduction in textbooks and school supplies, as well as professional development for teacher training at all levels. That's a summary. Again, the very specific point position, you know, the percentage of full-time equivalence loss you can find.
What pages is it on in the?
I don't have that, I don't have the budget in front of me. I'm just, I just know that it's avail, I don't have the, the.
Like I said, I didn't fully read through it because I'm trying to read through it in PDF on my computer and it's painstakingly slow.
I also just wanted to say in terms of like, well, can we find, you know, where else could be cut, other than that? Like, really, because I suspect that few people would argue with the, the value of the things that are being cut. And, and what I also wanted to offer to you is the context of, over the last ten years, there's been a total of thirty-seven teaching positions lost in the public schools. There's been elimination of these types of things already throughout the, throughout the years. There's already less physical education at the elementary schools. There's already no librarians at the elementary schools, none. There's half as many as there should be at the middle and high schools. There is a zero school supply budget at the elementary school level, zero. They have nothing to get pens, pencils, paper, markers. They need to rely on their PTO or the goodness of their art, going to their own, going to the drugstore at the evening and picking up the supplies. own, going to the drugstore at the evening and picking up the supplies. So just to give you an idea of what's, where we're at, and this is why we're at, down to cutting the, some core values of our education. There's nothing left to cut but that.
Uh, Councilor Spector?
I just, I want to thank you for the directness of your questions, and I think overall, for me, on this particular, this is the third override I think I've been involved in, for the most part, it's been a very civil discussion. I think it's a heated topic for a lot of people, and I think the tone of your questions, I think I'd like to, I'd just like to thank you for it, and that we can have a discussion about what are the real facts in the budget, and appreciate it.
I think that usually works better than hostility.
So far, it's been out that way. Counselor Labarge would like to say something, and we'll get to you in a second.
Oh, Mike, I'm gonna be up here forever.
Well, you're very popular.
Yep, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for being here, for asking the questions, and I'm hoping with what you heard, what Councilor Schwartz has talked about, with the school departments, what's happening here, the capital plan, I think Councilor David Murphy has explained it very, very well. And also, you wanted to know what page, it's 100, well, if you really want to get to the nitty-gritty on the public schools, it's on page 122.
All right, thank you.
And, oh, I forgot, I could loan you my budget book until Monday of next week.
It's also available on the city website, and Council Murphy had...
I have the PDF, and I actually suggested to, just another quick thing here, I have an e-reader, and I tried to put him in the e-reader. Most people, I don't know if you guys knew this, with e-readers like the Kindle, I have a Sony, Sony e-reader. PDF is horrible to read. My suggestion for you guys, put it in EPUB format. That way, it's much easier to download, you can read it on a Kindle.
Actually, ironically...
I told Jim that.
Yes, I know, and ironically, that would require some capital investment in the machine that will have to do that, so.
I'll donate some of my time.
Are there copies of the library?
Donate some of my time.
What's your number?
Council Murphy has one more comment.
Oh, just, and relative to school budget, that's really the purview of the school committee. When it goes past us, it's a total number, and that number goes to the school committee, and actually, the school committee probably has more direct control over more money in the city budget than we do, 'cause they decide how to spend it, and it's probably over 60% of our total budget. And it's kind of ironic, and this is just a little commercial for people who are into the schools, I think there's still seats for the school committee that no one has taken out papers for.
Only one person, so far as I know, has taken out papers for the school committee.
Yeah, so over 60% of our entire budget is spent by a committee that they're open seats on for a November election. So how that money specifically gets spent is up to the school committee. We see the big number go by, but we have no effect over how it gets spent, the school committee does. So if folks are concerned about it, please consider running for the school committee, because it does good and valuable work, and it spends a lot more money, I think, than we do.
Jeff, you now almost qualify for a stipend for sitting up here. Thank you very much. I'm gonna appreciate that. Ernie Brill, you're next, if you'd like. And then, I'm sorry, Joe, you know, I didn't see you. You were next, come on up, I'm sorry. And then, Ernie, you can come up after him.
I guess the whole exercise in fashioning a budget is try to match the income with the outlays. So when looking at the income, I know that the city is pretty diligent about keeping track of tax deficiencies. If somebody has sent a bill and they don't pay it, that isn't forgotten, that's kept track of. So I was curious whether there was an account where excess income that people voluntarily pay over their assessed amount, does that happen? Is that like, just, you know, something that is like, you know, outlandish? So, I mean, that's my question. Do people voluntarily overpay their taxes, or do they always pay the minimum they're required to pay?
So, Council Freeman Daniels?
Again, as this is a public hearing, I think people can also just speak without having to take anything or respond in any way. But, yeah, we do have a fund set up for that.
So how much money would be in a fund like that?
Oh, because that's a gift account, it doesn't actually get put into the budget. So as most gift accounts aren't included in the budget that we pass, so we don't have access to that, and it's outside of the budget hearing.
So, but there is a gift, so, I mean...
So there is, yeah, there is a fund, it's tax deductible, if you wish to, and it's just not something that we over, we look over in this, in the budget.
And how much money we would be talking at any time?
You're, I mean, like I said, it's not, it's not here, and it's not anything I know.
I guess my question would be, then, the practicality of, because you were talking about how it becomes acrimonious whether, every time there's a two and a half overrun. And I remember in 2004, it came down to eight votes, no one. And I had written a letter to the Daily Hampshire Gazette suggesting that everybody who voted yes, and everybody who put a yard sign that says, "Yes, I want my taxes higher," declare victory and send in the money that you wanted to pay. And there's this mentality that, "I'm not gonna do that unless the people who disagree with me are forced to do what I want them to do." I mean, if it's a good enough cause, that should be the reason. I mean, it doesn't stop being a good cause, right? If the city needs the money and you think you want to pay the money to the city, by my disagreeing with you, why does that dictate what you do? Why can't people be encouraged to go ahead, and if they want to pay extra, pay extra, regardless of whether the override's...
So, I just, we do have, we do have an account that accepts funds, and I can't say for what people did or didn't do. I'm not sure how this applies to the budget, though.
Well, because it's all part of what the money that the city could, so instead of doing it the way we're doing it now, why don't we have something that's voluntary for a change? Instead of requiring somebody to do this and penalizing them if they don't do it, why don't we, as a community, encourage those community-oriented citizens who think that they can pay the extra amount, to go ahead and pay it, and let's see who, so everybody who would vote yes, if they actually had it computed for them on a voluntary line in the assessment when it comes in, this is, you know, the recommended voluntary amount in excess of that, let's see, as an experiment, how much money that gains. And if that gets us 20% of the way to what the override would bring in, maybe we could, you know, have a smaller override.
Well, Joe, next would be Council Murphy, Council Spector, and just on that one point, that's actually legal. We can't, if there's not an approved tax, we can't assess a tax. So that, that would be the equivalent of assessing a tax. But as, I'm just saying, that legally we're precluded from that. I'm gonna allow, Council Murphy, then Council Spector, and on this side, nope, then Council Freeman Daniels.
People do give us money, but it tends, you know, it's not related to the tax levy, it's related usually to a specific thing. Like Mr. Horner gave us money to paint the homeless shelter, and it was substantial. Counselor Labarge, you remember?
$20,000.
$20,000. But it's usually for a specific purpose, where they donate us land or things of value. But as a gift, we have to vote to accept that gift, 'cause it's itemized other than taxes. And I'm supposing we could start a gift account for people who wanted to give us, payment in a little additional taxes or something. But people do give us money and things of value, but it tends to be for specific things that they want to direct it to, rather than to the general fund. I don't recall anyone giving us money directly to the general fund, but they usually give it for a specific project. And as in the case of Mr. Horner, it was substantial money, but it was earmarked for a specific thing.
And that also, Councilor, was the second time.
And the second time they did that, so.
I was just gonna give a similar example. The Northampton Education Fund, for example, I believe it has a $1 million endowment. So that's been going now for, what, 10 or 12 years, but 20 years now. They raise money specifically for the schools, and have raised a considerable amount. They have a $1 million endowment, that does a lot for the schools. But again, I agree, people tend to say, "Okay, this is my area of interest. I want to give some money." As you talked about, people gave money for planting trees on city streets. There's another example, and that tends to be what people do. So choosing specific areas. I'm a little concerned that that's how, we've had discussions here about people saying, "We want to put money together to make improvements on a public way," and we've had some discussions about, whoa, do we really want to go down that road? Because then the people on streets where they're very affluent can take care of their streets, but other people can't.
I guess what my question is, is the practicality of a new idea, of something that's different than's been done in the past. Instead of it being an assessment, it is a request for voluntary contribution in excess. You pay your taxes, and then if you feel that the government doesn't have enough money, and that you have money that you can afford, you voluntarily want to give an extra $1,000 or something like that. That there should be maybe a new approach to have kind of a voluntary override, that people say, "Hey, this is your assessment, you owe five grand for your yearly thing, but, you know, the, instead of an override, you could pay an extra $800 or something like that." And if, so once the money is solicited, if it starts flowing in, it could be put into the budget. Instead of it being for, you know, a specific event, it's for the general fund. I think that a lot of times politicians, you know, I remember watching them on TV, they say, "Well, you didn't vote for me, it's 'cause you didn't ask." Well, why can't the city, just for a change, ask rather than demand?
But, Joe, just to be clear, this is an ask. It's a proposition two and a half is not a decree. So, and let me finish, please. And to the larger question, you're speaking philosophically, and you've spoken in the past philosophically about the propriety of taxation, or the way of the system that we do taxes. And I think there's room for, plenty of room for discussion for that. You and I have, we agree on some points, in fact, actually, and other points, we stray apart. But the point is, and my concern is, is that we're talking about the budget that we have before us, so I want to keep the conversation focused on those points, because the points you're making, right, relative to responsibility, who should be accrued, taxes, or why we should accrue taxes, when is it appropriate to tax and not, that, on some level, that horse left the barn. The proposition two and a half is essentially an appeal to the community, to ask the community, which we're required by law, whether they feel that we're too, we need more, whether they agree that we need more money to do the services that they want or not, or whether they can afford it. And then it's up to the opposing parties to make their persuasive case, civilly, hopefully, and then the public ultimately decides. So the, so what I would prefer is if we could keep to the points of the existing budget that we have before us, because that's essentially the purpose of this hearing, is to address the issues of the current budget that is being proposed, that we're going to be required to live on.
I appreciate that, and I certainly want to be, you know, a positive participant in any kind of discussion about that. I'd just like to ask one more ask, one more philosophical point that would go into this budgeting process, that, let's say hypothetically, you're a vegetarian, and everybody in Northampton votes that you have to eat chicken tonight for dinner, okay? Now, is that gonna be, well, it's the will of the majority, that's democracy, or is that gonna be the reason we have a Bill of Rights? Because that's you. Me saying, "No, I don't want my taxes raised," somehow isn't, doesn't become voluntary because everybody else thinks my taxes should be raised, especially if they themselves aren't paying taxes to the extent I am. So the, so I think that for, you know, the idea that people can come together and what we agree with, is that, for me, I don't have kids in school, so when somebody tells me that, well, their kid needs, you know, a band uniform, do I have to buy the kid's blue jeans, too? Do I have to buy him his birthday presents? He's your kid, you take care of him. Why do I, why am I forced to take care of somebody's band uniform?
To that point, that's kind of where we part ways, but Council Freeman Daniels, then Council Adams.
So, you know, the, I would be, I'm very much in favor, and we do have a gift account that will receive voluntary contributions for any purpose from, from citizens. And actually, we don't have to, we don't even have to vote to accept them. We have to vote to expend them, but not to accept them. So this is, so part of the contributions that we receive, we actually, sometimes we, it's a surprise when we see them built up in our account. So that's, so that, your question, your main to the budget, really, is, is that sometimes those do get spent on, on things that the city needs, or things that the city has put as lower priorities, typically, typically lower priorities. The second part is the philosophical questions. I was a, I majored in philosophy in school, and obviously, I don't think that anyone who has an issue with eating meat would be ever compelled to be, to eat meat because the community voted that they should, or that they would have to, that they would be protected, because it would be, it would be personal preference. But taxes aren't the same as personal preferences. Just let me finish. Taxes aren't the same as personal preferences, number one. And also, in fact, when you, when people go into the ballot box, this is, I talked about this last time, when people go into the ballot box and vote for an override, or against an override, they're not voting to tax particular people. They're not voting to tax particular people. They're not voting to raise their own taxes, they're voting to collect revenue. They may be, if they're renters, they may be the future homeowners of a particular place or of a particular parcel. They may be the next person who gets taxed, or they might be someone who's currently taxed, have their parcel taxed, and they may be selling it the next day. They're not voting to tax particular people. They're voting for, to raise revenue in a particular way. There's a difference, but I've already, I don't want to get into a philosophical debate about the fairness of an override, of our override system, which I think is probably the, one of the most fair systems we have in the nation when it comes to raising taxes. You don't see it on the state level very much, you see it a little bit in California, and other state, and a few other states. You don't see it on the federal level. You see it on the local level, because we can be responsive to citizens' concerns and citizens' needs. That's where you see it, and you don't even see it in most states. You see it here, it's one of the fairest ways we have. I don't think, and I really don't think that we should be talking about the fairness of an override, because it is very fair, number one. Number two, I'm glad you brought up the override, because I was hoping that the mayor would, would be able to present his plan, and I'm saying this now to the council and also to the, to the administration, to present his plan for what cuts would be restored, what cuts that are currently in this budget would be restored, should the override pass. In fact, I understand that there's probably an extra, maybe $200,000 or $300,000 at minimum, that are, that is the difference between our deficit and what the mayor intends to spend on the upcoming fiscal year. And I'd like to see where those, where that might happen, before June 25. I was hoping that we would get that soon. We have another meeting before June 25, and I would really like, if, I don't think the mayor's here tonight.
The mayor, the mayor is at the commencement at Smith of Oak.
Okay, well, that's, he's, that's also time well spent, but I do think that we really should see, the council really should see what the override, and I said this when we voted for the override as well, that really, during the budget process, I would really like to know what cuts, what, how this budget will change if the override does pass. Because this is what, if the override does not pass, this is what we're, this is what we have, okay? And you see the, you can see the litany of cuts to the schools on page 125, I believe. And you, 120, yeah, 125. You can see the other cuts in services during our public hearings. For instance, we're not gonna get police officers walking the streets of downtown Northampton anymore. We're not gonna be able to cover, have them on foot, because they need to be able to cover a wider area. They're gonna need to be in vehicles. Those are, those are the cuts that we see. If we have an override, I'd like to see what cuts won't happen, and what the budget changes look like. Thank you.
Council Adams, Council Tacey, did you have, okay, and then Council Big.
I was just gonna speak to how fair and democratic the override process is, but Council Freeman Daniels articulately articulated that, so I'll weigh my point.
We do vote to accept gifts, don't we?
Yes.
We vote for the use of them.
I know when we vote to expend them, we also vote to accept them.
Yeah, I think so.
Just a point of, point of...
I'm just curious.
Tangible gifts, yes, but intangible things like cash, no, just expenditure.
Donation of a bike rack, for instance, we do vote to accept. The donation of cash.
We voted to accept cash on several occasions, checks that would come in. Yeah. But anyway, I remember Mr. Fred Ames, teacher, he died, he left $2.5 million to the school. So, but I have a letter off to the Department of Revenue that is asking if, which I think would help a lot of people, on their taxes, to exempt, as we exempt CPA on an override for a lot of their piece of property. I don't know how it's gonna come back. They usually respond within three or four days, if you are of a certain dollar amount in your household number of people. And I've asked, I asked the Department of Revenue to weigh in. Don Gorton is their name, so we'll find out. And he's been, he's been good to us before.
Could you clarify what it is you're asking the DLR for?
Yeah, on the, on the override. So we have abatements from the assessors office, and they're actually quite lame, if you think of it. They're money that you can, you know, you can defer a certain dollar amount or a percentage of your taxes, but you have to pay it back at 5% interest. And there's another one that is, if you're 70... And there's another one that is if you're 70, you get $200 or $450 off of your taxes. But most of those, most of those exemptions, they're still, they're already getting them. So it's, it's just a question I asked the Department of Revenue, and we'll see what they, how they respond. I don't know how they will respond, I have no idea.
So you saw before.
Well, I appreciate that, I appreciate your indulgence. It's my, from what you've said, it sounds to me that these gifts are, the people take the initiative themselves, they're not solicitations or requests by the city or by anybody else. It's just somebody, hey, I want to help the city by leaving this property or something like that. And what I'm asking is the feasibility of doing something different than has been done in the past, which would be instead of saying, well, instead of owing $5,000 this year, because 50 plus 1% of the public had voted to increase everybody's taxes, that, well, you know, it's either going to win or it's going to be, they're going to have winners and losers. And what I'm saying is if there are people who are inclined to pay higher taxes and vote yes and lose, that that can still be a resource that's tapped into if they're just asked. If they, if next year's tax bills go out with the required amount and an additional 2.5% or 3% or whatever the city council thought would be wise for everybody, if they, if they refuse to pay more, then that's their freedom.
So Joe, if I may say, we've heard your suggestion, the problem is, is we don't know even if legally, because the form of an ask confers a certain authority. And so my concern is, and we'll check and see if that's feasible, we can investigate that as a possibility, but the, to the extent where you ask, we basically need the authority to do that. A proposition two and a half, for instance, override, the voters have conferring the authority onto the body, but if, you know, it's worth investigating your proposal, so, and I've heard it, I understand what you're asking. You're saying to the people who would support an override, if they'd be willing to, despite the override failing, if it should fail, that they would continue to their commitment that they originally expressed.
Well, and I would think that Northampton would distinguish itself among its peers by saying, hey.
Point of order here.
Ernie?
You know, this is supposed to be a public discussion, this guy's, it's been half an hour now, one person. I don't really think it's fair to the rest of you.
The rest of you, everyone will have an opportunity to be heard, okay? So, and if it's any consolation.
It takes all night.
It's, 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 everyone will have an opportunity to be heard and we will hear them.
I mean, I would be sitting at home minding my own business if the city weren't after more of my money. This is why I'm here. I'm not here because this is pleasant for me, I don't have something better to do. It's like contesting that speeding ticket for $235. That's real money for some of us who have to borrow money to pay our taxes.
And now you're repeating yourself, so, and we have heard you, so I appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
All right, I appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you. Ernie, you're next.
Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Moore for clarifying the capital improvement plan.
If you could just identify yourself for the.
Ernie Brill, Seven Laurel Park. I just want to briefly say that this parking meter fund revenues, that's different from the capital improvement plan, am I correct? Okay. Within this, because there's one little piece I disagree with you, that any money for the schools should be sent to the school committee. First of all, this year, the city council has met with the school committee, they've had some joint meetings, is that not right? Okay. The other thing is, there is a general fund for the city, and the money can be given to any department in the city. That's what we talked about with the firefighters' ambulance fees, is that correct? Okay, so therefore, I don't see why money can't be given to the schools to fix what's insanely, horrendously messed up with our, with the school budget. Now, one of these things, as I've been talking to people for years, they say, you know what? And these people from both sides, Towne and Gounenhamp, they say, how come the police department every year gets three new vehicles? And some people say, how come the chief gets, you know, takes it home and all this. Okay, so these are, you know, axes to going, who knows, you know? But I have seen the three new SUVs that were purchased this year, and I have personally asked two officers at least, how much do these babies cost? And they wouldn't tell me. And in fact, they seemed embarrassed to tell me. But I asked my class, since I don't know much about cars, how much do you think those SUVs cost? They said $50,000 easy, okay? That's $150,000. That is three teachers and maybe an ESP. That's the salary, okay, of those people. So why each year do you need three vehicles? Why can't you just go to Nicky D's? He's reliable. And, you know, then they'd be plain, plainclothes cars, and maybe you could drive around and catch some of the drug dealers who sit on those benches too and sell drugs to our students, okay? But apart from that, apart from that, so I'm saying this money can be switched, I believe. That's one point. The main point I want to make about the cuts to the schools that maybe a lot of people don't understand, but I just am about to retire from 22 years teaching at Hamp, that this is the deal. There is going to be one art teacher, Lisa Leary, and our department, our art department has produced some of the highest quality work and awards in the state of Massachusetts, even with the private schools. We win awards every year, our kids go to the best art schools, and our kids have played in Annapolis in the Navy Band on invitation, okay? That's the kind of art and music program we have, the best in the state, okay? And now you're going to reduce that to one teacher after whittling down. When I came there, there were three full-time art teachers, okay? And the more important point is, there are kids who come to Hamp every day, and they're there for the art, and they're there for the music, and who knows what would happen to them if those programs were cut. I would say some of them would potentially leave and drop out, and you'd find them in Pulaski Park or on the benches two years from now, okay? What concerns me even more is, okay, you're going to cut the buses, okay? Well, that's cool for the parents who work at home or have money or can drive their kid to school, but a lot of parents in this town don't, okay? They don't work at home. They go to work every day, you know, eight to five, nine to whatever. So how are you going to get, how are these going to, kids going to get from Florence Heights and Ryan Road and all the way by East Hampton and from Leeds to school? We're going to have the strongest legs in the state of Massachusetts. And winter, okay, they'll just become great skiers, okay? Is that what's going to happen? How are they going to get there? You are going to increase the dropout rate, I can guarantee it, as a long-term teacher, because people are going to get discouraged. And as far as the 30 kids in the classroom, hey, I've been doing some of that for the last five years. But let me just tell you the one other piece that the city council really needs to worry about. What nobody talks about, because it's a two-school system, and all the attention and the money goes to the top, the AP classes, you also have a lot of kids who are quote sped kids, and they have IEPs. And their IEPs say that they are to have help one-on-one and somebody in the class or someone in the classroom to work with them. These are a lot of the positions that are being cut K to 12. All these dedicated teachers, they don't have the degree maybe, or they're getting their degree, who work with our kids. And I had a class of 28 kids, and I had no help, and half of those kids in my class had IEPs. And Heather Brown, another teacher, same thing. And when she went to the administration and said, I need help, said, sorry, we don't have enough, just do the best we can. Now, I'm saying, okay, play the fiddle, but there's something more important here. An IEP is federally mandated. It is a law that these kids get whatever is on their IEP. And if you don't follow that, you're open for a lawsuit. And this city will lose a lawsuit like that. And then you think we're in the hole now? Because I saw this happen in New York City when a school wasn't compliant. And they were sued for $2 million, and they lost that suit, okay? And they're up the creek. Not to mention the damage you're doing to all these kids, okay? So that is something to seriously consider. And if you have to take money, even just to restore the ESP positions, I would strongly advise that you do that, that we do that, okay? And as far as the comment of the gentleman, okay, I understand that some people say, okay, I don't have a kid, you know, my kids are old, I don't need any more. But what happened to that thing that's saying it takes a whole village to raise a kid? What happened to that thing about community? Northampton is a community, and these kids may someday be the nurses or doctors or, you know, he's a safety.
Just keep your, just direct it up here, please. And then if.
So, my question is, why can't money be transferred?
Counselor Murphy.
Relative to the capital plan, the capital plan money is in addition to the budget.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about parking, parking.
Let's look at that. Parking is, parking, some of that winds up in the general fund. But money that is, that the capital plan, which is money from outside the school department budget this year that we're going to spend is $59,000 for the heating system at the high school, $55,000 for that lovely sinkhole in your parking lot, $100,000 for the technology plan for the school department, $150,000 for the roof at Ryan Road School, and $150,000 also for Smith Oak, which we consider to be education dollars. So that's money that's not in your budget or Smith Oak's budget, but that we send up there.
Yeah, that's great.
And also, there's any number of dollars that go to the school department that are on our side of the budget, substantial amount of money that's on our side of the budget for retirement funds and things of that nature. So it isn't just money that's in the school department budget, it's capital money and also benefit money that's carried on our side of the budget.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
Counselor Spector, then Counselor Freeman Daniels.
Mr. Brill, thank you, thank you for teaching at the school. I had two daughters who were in your class, and they both loved your teacher, and you're a dedicated teacher, and I agree with most of your comments on the school piece. I just can't let you sit down, though, on one comment you made in public session, so you know this, you talked about a boathouse and money going to a boathouse, so that's very specific, that is not in the budget. We're not funding a boathouse.
Is that community preservation activity?
Nope, no, there's no money, there's no money for boathouses.
There's no boathouse anywhere.
And also, and I'm not sure you said this, but just to clarify, but I can understand the misunderstanding on that, and also the misunderstanding on things like that when we do, you see the city put forward $400,000 and we bought a piece of land. We learned last at the budget hearing, I think it was very interesting, that the planning department actually takes in, I forgot whether it was four times or five times as much money, do you remember the figure?
Ten.
Ten times as much money through grants, which are what primarily are funding these. So I'm not sure if you made the comment, but whoever did, that that money that we're using for some of these projects, we're actually, we put out the initial money, but we're getting all of that money back, and it's a, for every penny they spend, we're getting 10 cents back on that, so.
No, that's about land, I understand.
Okay.
But that's also, just so we're clear, it's not money that, it's a dedicated line item, it's not money that can be reinvested at our whim. It doesn't go into the general fund. Counselor Freeman Daniels.
Thank you, Mr. Brill, for your comments. And thank you for teaching at the high school and for doing the extracurricular activities at the high school that I benefited from so much. I do want to pick up on the, there's not much else I can say other than, especially regarding the school, is that I completely agree with you. The budgetary assignments are the purview of the mayor. We can cut, but we can't re, we can't increase any department's budget. It's simply not in our, in our power. We could cut, for instance, from a particular item and recommend that it get added, but the council does not have the ability to increase funding.
I think the mayor does.
The mayor, yeah. And I'm also happy that the boathouse was brought up because it was, it was really, it was a lot of sizzle, but not much steak in the newspaper just the other day, because it, it was really, it's a great way to sell a wonderful asset that Northampton might have in the future, but there's no allocation for a boathouse. And I can't say this, President Dwight's been saying this, we've been assuring Counselor Tacey of this, and I hope that the, that the community at large gets this, that we are not spending general fund dollars on a boathouse. I don't know, I don't even think that the majority of the councillors would support that, even though it will probably be a wonderful thing. I don't think that we would ever send money to a boathouse, despite how, probably how wonderful it would be to be able to recreate on the river instead of funneling it to our, to our schools.
There you go.
And the, the last part about the parking, the parking receipts, those can be used for any municipal purpose, but they, the sort of best practice for the city and for many cities, and this is sort of, this is prescribed by the, by best practices when it comes to managing business districts and managing downtowns, is that you want to try to recycle much of the, of the parking receipts that are collected back into downtown services, whether they be, whether they be police cars or, or certification or infrastructure projects. It's typically considered a very good practice, in fact, a best practice to, to recycle the, basically the fees collected in parking back into downtown infrastructure, or wherever it is that you're collecting.
Let me ask you a quick question. I'm taking this from David's letter. It's on page five, okay? I don't have the whole budget with me, but, so, instead of the three police cruisers, why wouldn't, why can't you talk with Mayor Norkowitz about using that money for the three foot officers that we're going to need if the override fails? Isn't it better to have three people than three cars? Maybe have somebody loan us three horses?
It was a longstanding practice in the city of Northampton to utilize parking receipts reserved for appropriation strictly for parking-related purposes. I didn't read it that way. So that was the, that was what made me contact against three or four department heads, a mayor, two city solicitors, and two finance directors. They said that that money had to be used for pregnant purposes. So I went to the Department of Revenue, and I came back with a letter that said, parking receipts reserved for appropriation can be used for any lawful municipal expense. And it was exactly around this argument about the schools. It, in my eyes, it freed up a lot of money that we were utilizing for things, you remember bucket loaders, you remember all the big, well, anyway, there is, and that was, that was why I went after it, because it seemed to, it was a huge pot of money, and now it's going to be 1.7 or whatever, a million dollars again. So that came back. Also, receipts reserved for appropriation from ambulance. Receipts reserved for appropriation is covered in the same general law on municipal finance and taxation. It can all be used, it says, we won't get into the law of it, but it can all be used for any lawful municipal expense. So there is, there is absolutely no reason whatsoever, it just depends on how the mayor proposes the budget. The mayor could take $200,000 out of the parking receipts and ship it to the school. That's, that's, that's up to the mayor. And as far as the, as Mr. Counselor Daniels brought it up, the boathouse, my opposition to the boathouse, and I've said this a million times, but everybody wants to twist it, is the grant money. We need to look at grant money. I would much rather have the feds and the states through legislation change how they administer grant money, maybe administer not quite so much grant money, and give that money to cities and towns as unrestricted local aid and let us utilize it where we see fit. But nobody wants to get their hands dirty and go after it. I do not believe that all of this grant money has to go, has to have all of these, all of our tax dollars, I was going to say grant money, I was going to say tax dollars. I don't believe that all of these tax dollars have to come to the city of Northampton with all of these strings attached. Never mind the baloney, we used to get 1.7% of our entire city budget from the federal government, we're now down to 0.3% in just seven years. Look at where the state has cut us. But they continue to administer grant money by leaps and bounds. Owen Freeman just said we get 10 times the amount of money in grants through the planning department. For Christ's sakes, let's have it as unrestricted local aid and we can fund our schools. For Christ's sakes, let's have it as unrestricted local aid, and we can fund our schools. We're going to do $38 million worth of roadwork. Go ahead. It's all about the budget.
You, you guys can't do that. Doesn't people like, people like Peter Colcutt have to do that?
Well, yeah, in point, in point of fact. In point of fact, actually, I think that was the gist of the argument. And again, it's a larger philosophical argument about taxation. And in fact, I don't think there's anyone who would argue Counsel Tacey's point.
Can I respond on that? Because he was directed it.
Sure. Yes, you may. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I, actually, I was just wanted to respond because I was just wanted to point out that the city's, another example of the city's wastefulness is this, is the bike path extension, which I, I think is in your, is in your work, Counsel Tacey. And that is also a grant. City would not opt to spend $250,000 from the general fund to extend a bike path. As much as the bike path is a good thing, we would not decide to do that with our general fund money. We would funnel that toward schools or other infrastructure projects. That's all.
If you, if you, what I was going to say was that the frustration that's born here in the council floor that you're seeing manifest here comes from essentially a profoundly dysfunctional way that the way we ask for the community to subsidize the community. Once upon a time, as Counsel Tacey said, once upon a time, we collected income taxes based, it was a progressive tax focusing on a person's ability to pay. And in the interest of politicians a little further away with more expensive suits, we're starting to make decisions that were speeding at the time. They decided that we're cut income taxes because we're not getting business investment and so on and so forth. But the fact is, the services are still mandated, as Counsel Tacey points out, and as Counsel Freeman Daniels said, these are mandated. And so what they do, what they've done instead is they've jerry-rigged the system to the point where it is a very awkward and clumsy and intrinsically unfair contraption. And so philosophically, you're not going to find an argument on this floor, ever, on these points about, about distorted priorities and how we invest in our priorities. Unfortunately, the, the job we signed up for that pays very little is, requires us to, we're dealt the hand of three cards when the opponent has seven, and we have to play those three cards. We don't get to fold. We don't get to back out. We don't get to do anything else. And the fact is, I absolutely agree. We are stuck with a regressive tax system that requires the homeowner or the property owner, not necessarily based on their ability to pay. Someone who paid down a $60,000 mortgage years ago is now paying more in taxes than they were paying on their mortgage, and they're on a fixed income. And we are creating an enormous disparity in, in the community by basically forcing those people to sell an asset and leave town. It is excruciating. The fact is, is that we, Proposition Two and a Half as a mechanism actually is, as Counsel Freeman Daniels said, a, a pretty interesting contraption that actually makes sense. Because what, to some degree, what it requires us to do, they set it at two and a half percent increase annually, which is never going to jive with inflation. Inflation's never been two and a half percent on average, and they knew that. What it was going to do is going to compel the, the city governance to appeal to the community every single time that they needed to increase those rates and find out what the community's sense of priority were. Are they to subsidize the schools? Are they to subsidize safety? Are they to subsidize streets and roads? And as the state and federal government has continued to abdicate their, their commitment and devotion to that, it falls on us. And then we have stormwater management fees that we have to do. We have a CPA. We come up with little, we come up with a CPA tax. We come up with a bid tax. These are special little devices that the state basically gives us as a gift in their mind, that they're giving us the opportunity because we are only, we're very limited as to how we can generate revenue in this community. Maybe that's good, maybe that's bad. But the fact is, is that it, it really does render us and puts us in the position that we are every year, is to having the discussion about priorities. And a budget is a document that supposedly reflects a community's priorities. And 62% of our budget is devoted to education. And I think we say pretty loudly to the world at large, we are devoted and committed to education. It's that we're willing to invest close to 62% of our budget to that end. And it's still not enough. I would never make the case to you that it's enough. It's not even close to enough. But that, I mean, that is the large, and I'm sorry, that was the larger philosophical discussion, but I just, I think it helps frame the context in which we're having these discussions. And, and the, when they're, we're expanding, extending the bike path, creating a riverfront park, that's actually us taking advantage of the little money that we can take advantage of in the form of grants, but it's dedicated. And we can't apply that to a school. When we're extending the bike path, we can't take that money. We say we would much prefer to invest in our teachers than we would to put down a gravel path for a bike path. And, and I think Counsel Tacey's point is absolutely valid in that respect. We would love to have unencumbered funds coming back from the state, which is our due because we already invested in this. This is our money we're asking for back. But it's coming back in smaller and smaller bits and pieces and with more and more strings, on top of which, lots more mandates is what we have to do. I'm done. Counsel Carney, then Counsel Tacey.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brill, for your comments. And the previous gentleman who came up and spoke. I think we've, we've heard from two of the general public so far in the, in this hearing. So I, I guess I'm, I'm interested in the process here. This is the mayor's budget that was presented to us as a city council. As Counsel Freeman Daniels pointed out, what, what the city of Northampton charter allows is for this body to cut the budget. We are allowed to look at department, either departmentally or across the board. We are allowed to make cuts. And I think that you've offered a couple of places that you suggest that we might cut. One being, excuse me, the, uh, purchase, the purchase of, of police vehicles. Three, three vehicles, I think you suggested.
SUV vehicles.
Three, three of the police vehicles. I don't think they make the Crown Victoria anymore, which used to be the standard. So I, I think we hear that. Again, to reiterate what Counsel Freeman Daniels said, we cannot order the mayor to then take, take that savings of $150,000 and direct it to, to the schools. And so I think, I'm not sure that there would be the will on this body to ask, to, to make that cut, to cut those three vehicles or to cut that dollar amount out of the police budget. And in fact, you know, my read of the budget, you know, is, is one that looks at, this is a really conservative budget. It, it will have the cuts that, that will be made if there is no Prop Two and a Half override. And as other counselors have said, I, I do have the confidence that this mayor and finance director have gone through with a, with a fine-tooth comb any place that there may be savings at all. And the frustration is that there really is not enough revenue. There really is not enough money to pay for the services that we essentially, that we really desperately need in the city. So I certainly am not prepared to, to vote tonight to cut the police department budget by $150,000. I'm not sure that I heard any other recommendations for cuts, but again, that's what we can do.
He was the ambulance as well, but.
No, the $92,000 for appropriation for Smith Volk, like, what's that for? They already have $5 million seats.
Again, we could, we could vote to, we could vote to cut the appropriation to Smith Vocational or any other place. I'm not prepared to make any of those cuts tonight, but I do hear, I do hear the requests coming for that those are cuts that you would like to see this CS make. And.
Just to be clear, we, we're not voting on this tonight, so, so, so that.
Okay, so not tonight. I know we have one.
This is the hearing.
We're not voting at all on the budget tonight?
No, this is a hearing.
Okay, so.
Public hearing for the.
Wasn't Mayor Norkowitz supposed to be here tonight to talk about the budget?
Talk about it.
No, he's, he's actually, no, he, he was not, it's just us. This is the council's, this is the council's hearing. I mean, we, I suppose we could have made a sneak and insisted that he be here. Not that it really would have really advanced the conversation necessarily. And there have been many opportunities, and there will be some more opportunities on June 11th, if you'd like to come. In fact, we're discussing, we're having a hearing about some, some other departments discussing that. So, and the mayor should be here for that.
Those won't have public comment, right?
They won't have public comment, but you're invited to send your questions and stuff.
So what are those departments then?
Uh, we have the schools. We have Forbes Library, Legal Department, Dispatch. What am I missing?
So anyway, if I might, for, it's really helpful to actually have some concrete suggestions of where we might cut because I think that that's pretty much what, what we can do. So hearing from you and hearing where you think there are opportunities to cut the budget with the knowledge that we cannot then order the mayor to transfer those savings to the school department or to any other department in the city. And so I imagine that there may be other folks who have other cuts to suggest for us.
Thank you.
Counsel Tacey still wants to, if you.
Yeah. These grants that we gave, these are snapshots in time. These are all things that, with the initial $100,000 for the Recreation Park at Connecticut River, it's a photo op. You know, the $100,000 to do this, and then Secretary Sullivan shows up, and you get your representative and your senator and the mayor, and it gets in the paper, and it's. So when you get to a meeting with your representatives or your senators, whoever the heck they might be, you don't start off the conversation with, hi, I'm a big supporter. You're doing a great job. Start it off with, this is what we need. I mean, we're not getting exactly what we need. We're not getting it from the state. We're not getting it from the federal government. Congress is not going to do a damn thing because they're dysfunctional. They've been dysfunctional for years. But somebody has got to somewhere along the line stand up and say, look at, this has got to be the end here. You're screwing us, and we know it. And you make some very valid points, but you have art and music, and you have many kids in the school system that do not necessarily do well in academics, but they excel in art and music. And that's, it, it might be, it might be a limited number of students, but they're real people. These are real kids. So the ones that do well in academics are going to do well in academics anywhere. So.
That's right.
When you teach French, Spanish, Latin, five years of it at the high school level, those courses, three, four, and five, you need two years of language to graduate from high school.
Those are, may be changing.
They may be changing. But you've got third, fourth, and fifth-year language classes. That's higher education. That is stuff that is taught in every university, in the community colleges. So why do we go right after art and music and physical education for kids? Why is it we go right after that and we don't go after third, fourth, and fifth-year language classes that they can pick up in the colleges? Instead, we're going to take those that don't do well in academics, that do well in art and music, we are going to disenfranchise them absolutely. And we're going to hold harmless the students that do well in academics as it is. It, it doesn't, you're cutting, you're, you're cutting in the places where you're going to go after the people. You're pulling at the heartstrings of people to pass an override to substantiate things that you don't absolutely necessarily have to have. I've got people on my ward that go to the grocery store with 20 bucks in their hand, and they are wondering whether or not they're going to buy a half a gallon of milk or a quart of milk or whether they're going to get butter today or are they going to get oleo. They're filling half of their prescription because they don't have the money to fill the whole prescription. And yet, I would never vote, I would never vote to push that anguish on any citizen. So if there's other places that we can cut in this budget, and in the school department needs to take notice of that also, I will not vote yes to push this on anybody in this, to force them out of their homes. They've already taken all their exemptions. They're elderly. They're disabled. 114 years, this woman on my street. She's lived in that house with her, her family for 114 years. She cannot possibly hang on. She's disabled. It, it's brutal, and I see this, it's all over my ward. It's in your, it's in, it's every ward in the city.
That's what I said.
I'll stop. Lobby your legislators.
That's what I said.
Get them to change the formula. He asked, Peter Colcutt, Lord, Mr. Murphy, asked Peter Colcutt at the meeting at the JFK School about more money coming to Northampton out of the money that we spend. And you know what he said? His answer was, oh, I'm sorry, the formula does not allow for that. The formula does not allow for it. Well, let's change the formula. And I'm not done yet.
No, I'm clearly, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Change the damn formula. Get a hold of your legislature. Get a hold of your Peter Colcutt. Get a hold of Stan Rosenberg. We have a new office right down here with a congressman, McGovern. My God, be banging on their doors. Be banging on their doors and say, what the hell is going on here? Look at us. Look at us. We're going to divide the city again with an override. It's going to be, the yes signs, yes, yes. The good people and the noes. So we're going to put, we're going to make this out to be good against bad. It's not the case. I'll stop.
Counsel Labarche and Counsel Freeman Daniels, do you want to go after?
I want to thank you for being here this evening. And I do have a new graduate department, New Arts Department. See her name on Facebook. You'll see her picture. She got a full scholarship at Amherst College. She just loves art, and I think eventually she will become a great artist. I mean, if you get on Facebook, you'll see who I'm talking about. You'll see her artwork. It's just beautiful. I have to say that what you're hearing tonight is absolutely true. Counselor Maureen Carney has, has said to you exactly, we are hearing what you have brought to our attention. Okay?
Thank you.
And I appreciate that also. I'm glad that Counselor Owen Freeman Daniels had apparently brought up about the boathouse because as a counselor, I have heard people really concerned about, how can we spend all that kind of money on a boat? Okay, that, that is not true. We have nothing to do with that. Okay, but I can see where you're coming at. Myself, as a city counselor, I have several questions about Smith Vocational. You know, I'd like to see their revolving accounts. I'd like to see, like we're being told, how many students are coming in every year versus how many students from Northampton are actually being accepted. That's important to me versus the outside. So there's answers that I need yet. We're not completed with this budget yet. But I appreciate you for being here this evening. And even with Joe, I, I agree with him too. There's concerns throughout this city. And I think he had a good value point also about where people can donate their money. If they vote for yes, do they want to add more or not onto it? Why not? Why not try it?
It goes with what I said about having a serious exemption, okay? For people that have to choose between bread or butter, Jean. Okay, those people have a buy. They just totally have a buy. More, you know, nothing. Okay, low, you know, low-income senior citizens. I qualify as a senior citizen. When I go on the subway now, someone says, would you like a seat? I turn around, and there's nobody there. So I'm learning. But anyway, and then to make up that difference, there you go. You lead the fun. The people that want to. He lead, oh, sorry.
Yep, yep.
People like him who want to donate money, and there's people in this town with money. Hey, do it. And I would advise that if somebody wants to do that, you contact Marty Wall and the people that started the Northampton Education Foundation, and in 10 years raised $1 million in this city. Because they know how to raise money, and they're right here. And I'm sure they'd love to help people out on a free consult how to do that. You know, we have a lot of talent in this town. We should take advantage of it because as, as Joe said, we have to do things in a new way.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I just, thank you. I just want to remind Counsel Tacey that, especially his comments about the language arts, that so far as I know, there's still time to take out papers for Ward Seven School Committee.
I think there's a seat for Ward Three, too. Ms. Gates, next.
I'm Lily Gabe. I live in Florence on Route 66, which was a model project in the feather and Santa's cap and a headache in ours. But is the budget where I understand the decisions for which streets get to be streets?
No, the budget, the budget is, actually, that's a different process.
It's a different. It's a different pocket.
You're talking about the privatization, private streets versus public streets. That's actually separate from the budget, although, you know, it does, it will impact or reflect on the budget, not this fiscal year, but probably next fiscal year. And so, that's part of the conversation, it's also one of the drivers, that and the fact that the state-
Because it involves plowing, and-
Right, right.
Maintenance, and changing light bulbs.
Exactly, and the state, what drove this was originally that the state has since, well, historically, the state, as you described, and others have described, the state's roads were, you know, the joke is, they, the goats planned out the paths and the roads that we created, and historically evolved over, didn't involve a whole lot of planning, and subsequently, a lot of things historically kind of were fudged, and things like that, it wasn't-
Point of order, Mr. Chair. I think the answer to this one is short.
Yes, what?
The question was, is this part of the budget piece?
All right, so that's what I'm asking.
And the answer is, no, it's not, but there will be a discussion later on the agenda.
Okay, and-
It really is not.
So, all right, so, can I say anything now about Center Court that involves, I think, very specifically the city council?
Not at this time, because it's a budget hearing.
Okay, so, when might I address the city council? Because I think, being that you serve your constituents in each neighborhood of the city, your particular relationships with utilization of Center Court as community-
Well, Counsel Adams and myself are the councils at large. Your ward counselor, I believe, is Counsel Schwartz.
No, me. She lives right near me.
No, 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 for Center Court.
Oh, that's where your business is.
She's behind the Sonic Building.
Yeah, that's where her business is.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's Ward Four. So, you, we can meet with you at some point, at an appropriate time to discuss that, but, yeah, and right now is not the time or place.
Okay, because I think it, it's not the, my ward that needs to hear my comments, it's the city council as a whole, because of your responsibility to residents of Northampton. I think that's what distinguishes us.
Thank you. We did hear your comment at public comment, and that is the appropriate time to make that.
All right, yeah, I know. Well, I-
As do we. We heard you at public comment.
Right, I know.
And-
And I'm asking when and-
That was it.
Next time that I could address-
That was it.
-the city council.
If you want to address the city council, this is public comment. If you want to address the city-
Point of order, she's so focused, you're free to contact anyone on the city council, all our names and addresses, phone numbers, email addresses are-
So, I could send a-
You can send letters, and emails, and call, to your, as much as you-
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the budget? Counselors, any, Dennison?
I really don't want to.
All right, well, we don't want to force you, all right. Please identify-
Let's ask a question. Dennison Wolf, One Isabella Street, Northampton, Mass., and I work at Smith Voc. And I just want to ask the question, your people are saying, "I want to know more about the Smith Voc budget." Is that going to happen? Is there going to be a discussion with public comment about the Smith Voc budget before this budget?
The, we had a hearing already without public comment, but it was a hearing relative to that budget. Now would be the time to make that.
Yeah.
The, the budget, they've since presented an amended budget at our request-
Uh-huh.
-that conforms to the budget that was laid out before they were asking for more money. The, the larger debate relative to the Smith Vocational clearly is, looks like that's looming at some point, but it's not scheduled.
But it's looming, we won't have it now.
You're welcome to actually-
No, I don't want to.
Teach ya.
I'm very happy to wait in when the looming comes, expect us, as they say.
Right.
But, just on the point of whether, whether the superintendent has now done what he should do and could do, I mean, there was no extra in the budget. What you got was the elimination of a position, which is my position, and half of another position. And so, I said, "Have you had a bad week? I'm the Quaker at Smith Voc, and I resigned a position two weeks before it was eliminated." So-
Is that, is that a result of the amended budget that they-
The amended budget is the elimination of a position, two of us left, and as a result of that, too, he's combining it into one, and that's where the money savings comes from. And that doesn't count, for whatever reason, benefits, and there's another person leaving, not being replaced by attrition. He's taking money out of the admin budget when he's able to. But there isn't like extra money, you can't cut the copper budget for plumbing, you can't buy less lumber and educate kids to build houses, you can't not buy paint for painting cars and teach kids trades. And I just want to say that the value of vocational student graduating in your community is somewhat higher than the value of an academic student who leaves to go to college somewhere else and starts accruing debt with no hope of a job. We're educating kids for jobs, and it's worth more, and it's completely different to be the superintendent of a 21st century vocational school than a superintendent of five elementary schools and jail for kids in a high school. So, I just encourage you to look at the Smith Voc budget a different way than saying, "We need to cut this or that." And, as you say, 60% of your budget is the school department, and you don't have school committee members, because they don't have much authority over that budget either. It's all in salary to union employees and retirements. And that's the same thing at Smith Voc. A big chunk of that budget is in salary to union employees. So, when you start cutting lines there, you're cutting bone, not just meat, that's all. And I know there'll be a discussion about what happens at Smith Voc, and, you know, we'll come to that. Oh, it's JFK, John F. Kennedy Middle School.
Oh, I heard jail for kids, okay.
A lot of, a lot of people say that. I took my son out of it, because we had a great time at elementary school in Northampton, a great experience at Jackson Street. Went to JFK, we moved to a charter school, and then we came back to the high school and had another great experience. But that's not really a budget question. It's a difference in what a superintendent does in a vocational school and in the school department.
And I, if it's any comfort, that actually, those, the points that you brought up came up during the course of that budget hearing, there, and I think it was universally expressed that we value, and without, you know, it's, we're not just fobbing anyone off, we truly value the unique status that the Northampton, well, what we benefit from, from the Smith Vocational Agricultural School, and then also for the region. And, but, as you also said, it requires scrutiny and the discussion. And this is the first year, actually, that we've actually ever spoken with anyone from Smith Vocational relative to their budget line, and-
Because previously, it was always done on a personal basis between a superintendent and mayor, who were doing good communication.
There was, there was that, and there was, but there was also the fact that, just the same with the school committee, they have an elected body that presides over it. And it just, it's appropriate, because we, we offer the same scrutiny for the schools, the other Northampton public schools, and it's only appropriate that we, I mean, particularly during this time of the override, that it would be enormously irresponsible if we did not review the, the funding and the lines.
I'm very much not trying to go to the larger discussion, just to advocate on behalf of Smith Voc-
And I appreciate that. No, I appreciate that.
He's done what he's able to do.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
I called it that, too, when I went there.
Well, he's fair to criticize me, I shouldn't have said that. I apologize, Mr. Tacey.
My kid called it that, too.
All the kids I know call it that.
Yeah, see, all the kids call it, it's a term of affection. What's that?
My kid does not call it that.
All right.
Currently there, doesn't call it.
All right, okay. Now that we've, we've settled any number of things, not the least of which JFK, what JFK stands for, are there any other comments on the budget, relative to the budget? Any more comments from the council floor?
Maybe if we take five.
Well, Jackie, did you want to speak? Well, pop up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Well, the four opportunity like this prior to the override vote.
No, not for the, this is the public budget hearing. This is the purpose of this.
Public hearing like this prior to the-
The only time remaining after that is public comment, and, and in that case, we're not allowed to respond. So, all questions would be rhetorical at that point, maybe, which they often are. But if you, if you have a question now, now's the moment.
I guess, but my questions are rhetorical, based on what I'm thinking.
Well, please come up and speak. I mean, honestly, this is, this is the time.
It's not about the pitch.
Come on.
Come on, Jackie.
Come on.
Right, I think, I think-
Well, we're all friends here.
If you want to attack us without us being able to respond, then do it at public comment, but if you want the council to actually take your, take your comments seriously, then I think you should come right up.
And Jackie, for the record, please identify yourself.
I'm Jackie Misa, I live at 95 West Street in Northampton. I do want to address city council prior to the override vote, but those comments would have more to do with procurement practices. That was, that's my intention. I've heard a number of things this evening that make me wonder a little more. Number one I have written here is, you say that, excuse me, 62% of the budget goes to schools, and we've heard about pensions and salaries and such, but, and with little to show for it, based on your own words here tonight. How can that be? 62% of the budget with little to show for it, where teachers are buying their own supplies. We have, we have the privilege of CPA funds. We also have the highest incidence of overrides, at least in Western Mass, and someone said in the state. We have an option here in town, we have a large entity, the mayor had spoken of this, or heard, listened to this discussion or argument, I think, prior to his inauguration, and certainly after, the option to discuss greater pilot payments from Smith College. That discussion seems to have disappeared. Someone wrote a very good piece, Jesus Leva, recently reintroduced that at the 11th hour. And then, there's my observation or experience with procurement. But, and we can be going after these additional Smith College dollars, or for non, all nonprofits, not just Smith, there are a number of nonprofits in town. CPA money, highest incidence of overrides, 62% of the budget going to the schools, but there's nothing, but they're broke, flat broke. So, again, kind of rhetorical questions here, it doesn't make sense.
Well, they're not rhetorical questions, I think those are reasonable questions that, that any number of people are willing to answer. I'm going to go with Counsel Specter first, Counsel Freeman Daniels, Counsel Schwartz?
Well, I wouldn't say that the schools are flat broke, in fact, there are programs there now which are incredible, specifically, and you heard about the art and music programs, the Northhamptons, which have a musical director who would be cut, is an incredible program, more than just, often, as you say, Counsel Tacey, kids can excel in art and music, and it's not even necessarily that those kids are going to stay in art and music, but it helps them in a lot of ways.
They've got three CDs out.
And they're, yeah, but whether they do that, or they go on to other things, there are incredibly good programs for helping people to learn, and there are a lot of great programs currently at the school. There were a lot, there were even more programs when my kids were at school, so we've been cutting, and cutting, and cutting. As Mr. Brill said, that we've had many programs there which have been nationally recognized, and we're great in that. We used to have more, I also agree that, I think sports are very important, they're not just about playing the sport. I think there's something about sports in our schools which are incredibly important, and we've seen those cut back, where the cost for parents on those programs go up and up and up to the point where it's getting difficult, and we've talked at times about cutting even more sports programs. So, I think we still have great schools. I don't think they're as great as they were, I think we've cut too much, I think it's very difficult for teachers to teach with a class of 30 or 32. We know one of the most important things is for teachers to have smaller class sizes. I think, given that, and again, we had one of the, a really great teacher who was up here, who my kids had just a few years ago, fantastic education with this teacher. However, he's leaving, I'm not sure how much he's leaving, because he has more and more of a burden of students, but I think we still have great schools, I'm afraid of where they're going. I'd say we have good schools, and I'm afraid with where they're going, and I would like to see at least the quality we have now maintained.
And your rhetorical question, which was not rhetorical, is that, the short answer, and people will expand on that, is the state's commitment to the investment in schools, and the state's commitment to investment in infrastructure has reduced enormously, epically, and it's why, I mean, that contributes, that is the single largest contributing factor to the straits that we find ourselves in. And Counsel Freeman, Counsel Schwartz, who had-
Thank you. I, this is a quibble, but I'm not sure where, I thought it was more like 50% of the, of the city's budget goes toward the schools.
And Counsel Murphy would address this, but it's, when you, when you combine pension obligations and-
68. Debt service?
68.
Debt service?
We have, yeah. Over $16 million in employee benefits. Well, the bulk, the greatest majority of our employees are school employees, so you have to add a prorated portion of that into the school budget. So, when you take a majority of that $16 million for employee benefits, and assign that to the school employees, that's what kicks us way up there. But it is, it's on our side of the budget, not on their side of the budget. We pay for it on our side. But if we assigned it person for person to our largest department, the schools, it would kick them up over that.
Okay.
That's where that comes from.
I just-
Yeah, but it, the pie chart's different, but that's because their share of that is on our side.
Yeah, and-
And that includes Smith Voc.
Employee benefits.
Yeah, they're on, they're on our, that part of our side, too.
I, I have to concur with Counsel Specter, I mean, to say that we have nothing to show for it, or, I don't think it's really accurate, but I do think that, I mean, because we graduate great students, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm one of them.
Well-
And, okay, so, fair, fair students, then, fair students.
We don't have to worry.
But, but, but I understand that-
Courtney Brill agrees with you.
Totally.
I want to hear more about what you're, what you say about procurement practices, because that's a part of the budget that we don't look at that much. As far as the, the pilot programs, you know, we have, we do have a lot of nonprofits in this city, and we have a very large one. I, I don't think that, I, I'm very proud of, of Smith College for-
Yes, we know.
They do, and for the, and for the adjustments that they've been making to modern education, especially modern education for women. You know, they, they have the right to do with their land what they, what they see is for the future, and they have, what they have, they have their own plans for the future, and I, and I think that they're very laudable, offering engineering programs to, you know, women's program is, is, I think, fantastic, and the city has been the beneficiary of that. And the college has to remain healthy, and, and strong, and on the cutting edge, which it has done, and continues to do. I, I'm sure that, from everyone's perspective, on the city side, we can, we can always say that they could do more, and the college has no legal obligation to do so, and-
Well, that's kind of like the parking ticket thing.
I'd like to have, I'd like to, we might have a discussion, maybe on the state or federal level, whether that's worthwhile to compel these institutions that seem like, excuse me, what's seen as though they have a lot of money, who really actually end up spending quite a bit of it on, on their own, on the tuition of their own students. The, as far as the funding for Smith goes, they look more like a public university than a private college, when you look at how much money they give out in, in scholarships and, and grants to their, to their students. So, I think that the Smith College, you know, we can always have that conversation, but it's, it's not a sustainable conversation, it's not a conversation that we're going to be able to say, "Oh, that fixes our budget for the foreseeable future." So, so I appreciate the comment, but the pilot program is really just sort of, I think it's valuable for very large, very well-off institutions like Harvard, but when we, when we talk about Smith College, we're talking about a school that, that is very different from that.
Jackie, you, certainly?
Absolutely. Oh, where to begin? So, and that's interesting, the city of Northampton is subsidizing Smith College students, in that we are giving them a healthy basis for their ability to subsidize their students. That's just a very new, novel thought for me.
Do you have more questions than that?
Sure. You would also like to say, since we're all talking in public, that you have a very strong bias toward the school, as your mother has been a professor there, is that correct? Is that accurate?
Again, if you have-
Is that a yes or no question?
Jackie, and I prefer that we keep this on the budget as opposed to ad hominem.
But it is.
But you're debating his motives for his discussion.
Okay, but he's also taking it as an exclusive statement, an absolute- Okay, but he's also taking it as an exclusive statement, an absolute statement. These are absolute statements he's seeming to present.
I'm not talking about absolute statements. I'm saying in order.
Okay, I can move on.
It's a conversation. I think, I think it's wholly appropriate to argue the point of whether a pilot versus non-pilot we're aggressively pursuing.
Sure.
What Counselor Freeman Daniels' pedigree is, is not appropriate.
I didn't use the word pedigree at all. I said bias.
I did. What I'm saying is, I'm just saying that it's not necessarily germane to the point. Because when we wade into that point, this is, then we get to the point the Counselor Tacey was concerned about, was the divisions and the schisms.
Okay.
And so if you, and, and it's wholly appropriate to debate and discuss the validity of a pilot, which I actually agree with you. So, but the fact is, and, and I should point out, actually, the conversation's not disappeared. We, in fact, the conversation's about the change. You're now, you now have a new mayor, you have a new president of, of Smith College. And pilots, pilots have been approached from a variety of different angles, and that's for all, and for large nonprofit systems in the community to figure out how we can make, we can make an arrangement. We're not necessarily dealing from a position of strength, because as, as Counselor Freeman Daniels did point out, it's, they're legally entitled to say, no, thank you. But the, the fact, and, and I would say that to Jesus as well, that this is, this is not falling off the radar, and is not, and people haven't run away from that conversation. It is an ongoing conversation, which I'm saying, and the topography is changing, and we'll see how, what that pans out to be, so. But, so, I'm sorry, so if you wanna respond to...
So the mayor has proposed an override vote before seriously discussing and pursuing pilots?
Counselor Schwartz, you wanna address that?
That's just not true.
It's not true?
No, it's not true. And there's conversations...
Please.
I'm not gonna speak for the mayor, but I can just tell you that you, with all due respect, I don't think you know enough to be making those...
I disagree with that strongly.
Okay. So, I, there's, there's a history to the pilot issue, there's, there's a, there's a, a history in conversation with Mayor Higgins, with then Mayor Higgins. There's, there is, I think that the, the pilot issue is a valid one, that deserves our time and attention, that I think that is, is receiving it in a, on a path that may not be at the pace that you approve of. But it's to say a blanket, he's pursuing an override instead of the pilot. We have a gap of 1.4 million dollars. We have a state that has deprived, that has cut our local aid to the point where, were we level funded since fiscal year 2002, we would have thirty-five million more dollars. There is not a mystery here about why we have, are in the position that we're in. Are we continuing to cost save? Are we not budget, we are budget cutting? We are implementing every local option tax that's available to us? The bottom line is, we cannot make up lost state aid at this rate without an override.
Disagree. There is a discussion of the 400 K in stipends that are handed out, in addition to salaries and pension, there's been a discussion of vehicles. Procurement will be another topic. And then you also just digress from this very specific discussion of, of pursuing the override. Going after the property owners.
Can I just say again?
Individual property owners for a permanent override versus having a large, important discussion with one of the largest, or if not the largest, landholder in the city.
The, the counsel...
And others, and others, not just the college, and others, other revenue options.
Counselor Tacey.
You, you well remember the conversation of the Green Street neighborhood houses being you, we all remember, we all remember this.
I've inherited Smith College as a landlord as a result of that. That wasn't expected, but that's the reality.
So anyway...
Didn't choose it, didn't choose it.
It was a pilot program that was, that was reached. It was a negotiation with the mayor, and, but...
Small, chump change, essentially.
Well, it was sixty-one thousand dollars.
Wow.
Jackie, please allow him to finish, and don't interrupt him while you're speaking.
Yes, I know, you're my pal.
It came to sixty-one thousand dollars, and then there was another small piece that was involved, which was the street, and the total came to sixty-seven thousand dollars. And then, at the end of the agreement, Smith College said they would provide that sixty-seven thousand dollars as tax revenue to a pilot program for the city of Northampton. And I don't, and the part that I never heard, that is actually written into the end of the agreement, is that if they replaced all of that housing with low, low or moderate income housing in the community, that whatever that property was assessed at, they would be forgiven that particular amount of money. So, actually, with, there's three properties. One is on State Street, and there's, there's two others, off the top of my head, I can't remember just exactly where they are, but it came to about forty-seven thousand dollars worth of exemptions for the college. So for the sixty-seven thousand dollars that the property is assessed at, that they tore down, we get something less than twenty thousand dollars on that. That's what our, that's what we get from the Smith College for that property. Also, they were building a parking garage, and that was going to be, it was gonna pay taxes. They were gonna pay taxes on that garage. That was the conversation that went through this council, went through every different board and chamber, and then what happened was they built the garage, and they loaned out or rented spaces, or leased spaces to professors, which then it fell under Chapter Forty, and it was tax exempt.
So, Jackie, did you want...
There's, there's all kinds of stuff that...
I'd like to speak to another one of Ms. Counselor Freeman Daniels' responses about the financial health of the, well, it wasn't supposed to be a focus on Smith, but, and other nonprofits, but since he's, we've discussed this in detail. And since I have firsthand knowledge of a lot of the back and forth and the doings and the finances, well, in terms of properties being bought and sold, we need a, a healthy Smith, but we also need a healthy residential tax base, and we need to keep people in the city, and we need to keep merchants in the landlord-owned shops. Smith College paid nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in September of 'oh six for Twenty-One Belmont Avenue above market price, the same day they spent 1.3 million on two other homes, Ninety-Five West Street and Sixty-Nine Belmont Avenue. The nine hundred and forty-five thousand, sixty-one thousand, forty-seven thousand. The nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollar structure was a seven-unit rental property in very fine condition compared to many of the rental properties in town, and that was leveled this past September. It is now lawn. They paid nine hundred and forty-five thousand dollars plus to have a lawn. Twenty-Seven Belmont was purchased a long time ago, they continue to buy properties all in that corridor, but I hear comments about the concern for their financial health compared to Harvard. They're healthy, perhaps to our detriment, wiping out residential properties, affordable housing, and I don't mean subsidized, no one has ever meant subsidized. We're talking about homeless people here in benches, and housing is actively being wiped out by an institution, a tax-exempt institution, that is paying top dollar for properties and embracing them.
Counselor, do you wanna, you wanna respond, or Counselor Specter, you had your hand up as well, and you hadn't spoken.
I'd like to respond. Yeah, I, I'd like to say two things. One, I do not believe that assessing the, the purchase price for what is clearly Smith's, Smith College has clearly a long-term plan for that, that area of its own properties. Assessing the purchase price does not indicate that their operating budget can afford what is an, for, a pilot, a hell, a very large pilot program, number one. Number two, even if they could, it's not sustainable. We as city counselors, even though I'm not gonna be around next year, we city counselors cannot come to rely on a, an agreement that may not be renewed year in and year out. That's not a sustainable practice for the city. We might be able to work out some sort of long-term arrangement that, that we would be able to budget, to adequately work into the budget, but that is going to take some time. Certainly, the outgoing president would not commit to that kind of long-term agreement. And also, I don't believe that Smith College would, would sign a very large long-term agreement, because they have their own long-term projections, and I, I disagree with you. I don't think they're as good as you think. But, and then the second part, the second part to my point, so that, that's just about the pilot and its impact on the budget. It may be that, I think we might get a, come to a time where we'll be able to reasonably count on some pilot funding, but I don't think that it's wise to build that into the budget, because it can be, they have no legal obligation to pay it, and they, and, and so they may not, unless they sign some sort of legal obligation to pay it. And I would be very surprised if they signed anything that was more than a one- or two-year arrangement, and I think that's, it's foolhardy to rely on that. It's, it's really unsustainable. And the other part is that I think we've heard you talk about procurement, and I'm not sure what it is that you're talking about when you come to procurement practices, whether that's in the budget, but I, I'm not sure if, other than that, I haven't heard much relating to the budget here that is what we're here for.
Revenue, we're talking about revenue. Budget equals revenue, that, the whole point of the override is to gather revenue. So you're saying that it makes more sense to burden Mom and Dad and Sue and Joe in perpetuity yet again over a large, the largest land-holding institution in the city?
So the question is whether it's a burden, and we're gonna find that out on January twenty-fifth.
And, and...
That's, we've heard, heard the pilot.
Just a second, just a second, please, just a second. The more critical, the more salient feature here?
Yeah.
No pilot will figure into the 2014 budget.
Counselor Specter had a point of order.
A point of order. Chair takes precedent, which is, I think these are very valid points that we should be debating, but really, the topic here, we can go all over the, the topic is this budget for next year. And it's an interesting point to think about future budgets, but this is a budget hearing on this budget, so I'm, I was just gonna make a point of order that at some point...
That was my point of order, so...
Thank you.
I trumped your point of order, and I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But the, the, and to that point, it's, if, because I think, ongoing, and this has been ongoing, the conversation about a pilot is not ruled out of...
Correct, because unlike Mom and Dad and Joe and Sue, the institution's been here for over a hundred and twenty-five years.
I hear you, I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying that...
And it's not twenty-one, it's not...
There will be no, there will be no pilot regardless for the 2014 budget. And that is why an override is being asked for, if, I'm just extrapolating from that, but that is why an override's being asked for, because there is no pilot in existence now, so it can't be applied towards the budget. So, and that's what we're charged with addressing here. We've, we've been all over the map, clearly. I mean, we've, we've identified any number of things, and pressure points, and conflicts, and, and concerns, and that is actually part of the public discourse, it's appropriate. But beyond that, I mean, I think, I think if you, if there are some particular procurement practices now that you see represented in this budget, or some other items that are represented in this budget for FY twenty-fourteen, that, we need to hear, we need to hear from you. And if you have those, we, I'd prefer, I'd, I'd be pleased to hear them.
Unfortunately, I'm not prepared to address them this evening. I had intended to, but then, kind of, for various reasons, have given up on it. But unfortunately, we have, we're having, I thought that, I thought this actually hearing was supposed to occur next week.
There is another hearing next week, and that's, that's another council budget hearing, or we're hearing from departments, so it's not, there won't be the public give and take that you're experiencing now.
Okay.
But that doesn't, now, you're still, Jackie, you can still write up something, submit it to, for the public record. It's, it'll be distributed to all the councils as well. So if you wanna itemize it, or make some other points particularly relevant to this budget, 2014, that's, that's wholly appropriate. And, and in fact, this will be debated on the council floor eventually when we, when it comes to the vote on this budget, which will take place, the first reading will take place before the override, the second vote will take after the override, depending, the override vote, depending, and it will be determined by the outcome of that election. So there will be more opportunity to speak to these points in public session and, as well. Jean? I'm just Counselor Tacey, sorry.
Never...
It's okay, Bill.
I don't want anybody to, to walk away. Whatever Smith College does or does not put into our budget is beyond me, but we, also, I don't want anybody to forget that downtown Northampton is vibrant, and it is every bit a part of the college campus as Smith College proper is. It's every bit a part of it. So whether or not they put in or they don't put in, that's another, there's arguments on both sides of that. Would your downtown be as vibrant without Smith College?
And they do use...
Do they pay for fire, protect, do they pay for this?
Right.
They do, they...
Right.
It's a huge asset. We discuss assets, it's our school system, and Smith Volk, and, and Smith College. My grandmother went to work at, before child labor laws, she was born in eighteen ninety-seven, she went to work at Smith College in nineteen oh eight. And she worked there all of her life. She died in nineteen eighty-five. I mean, I, I, it's an emotion, it's a compassionate argument, and I, I try to, in my own head, try to figure out in a way the importance of this college. This college is tremendously important.
Of course.
Yeah, I know we can try in strong armor or, or whatever, but we have to also be very careful. We have to, it's a balancing act on just exactly how important it is and how much we wanna push them.
But you're, but that's the point.
Imagine downtown without the college.
That's a large part of, that's a large part of the point, pushing them. It's not a matter of pushing them, it's a matter...
This again, you, the chair, stick to the topic. This is about...
But, 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 I'm going back to the, okay, but I'm going back to the people, pushing, you're pushing people out of town with the override.
Excuse me, but this also is not, this doesn't have the override in this budget.
Exactly.
It is very fair to come in, it is very fair to come in, as some other people did, or as you have said you would, to say, here's areas where we could cut this budget. That is a very, that is appropriate to this conversation. This is not about the override or not. This does not include the override. This discussion is about this budget. We are open to hearing, where could we make, where is a council, we could make cuts in this budget. It's helpful to hear, there have been a couple of suggestions this evening, that we're spending too much on police cars. Maybe we are, maybe we should look at that. But any suggestions, you mentioned procurement. If you have suggestions, as the council president said, you could send those in to us, but that's the discussion. It doesn't even include the override in this budget.
And again, it might be my failing eyes, but I didn't look at the schedule specifically, and I didn't see the, the hearing discussion for this evening, so I apologize. But again, I was responding to some of the comments, too.
It is publicly advertised several weeks in advance, actually. Do you have any other questions or recommendations to the FY 2014 budget?
Not this moment tonight, no, but perhaps in writing.
We're available to.
I know.
You can contact me on Facebook.
I know.
Anyone else interested in commenting on the budget, or any suggestions tonight? I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Oh.
Second.
Sure.
Just to close the hearing.
Just, just, relatively, just a, a relatively quick general comment, but it's, it's budget-related in that most of the discussion tonight has been about our only mechanism to fund this budget, which is an override, and the fact that we've got two budgets, one if it passes and one if it doesn't pass. And people's greatest concerns expressed here tonight has been what happens if it doesn't pass. We're discussing the, the mechanism. And, and the problem is, we're not a financially viable entity, because we can't level service budget, we have to level fund budget. And that's to the core of the problem, and healthcare, labor, and fuel expenses, since the inception of Proposition Two and a Half, make us unviable, because we're gonna hit the wall every three years or so. Even if we get, if we get an override, it's good for about three years, and then labor contracts, and fuel costs, and healthcare and insurance make us hit the wall again. And the override is really our only option because of the way the state allows us to raise funds, and that's what I mentioned to Peter Kokat at the S meeting, was, you've gotta respect the fact that there's three hundred and fifty-one cities and towns in Massachusetts that are not financially viable, because the only thing we can do is go back to our property taxpayers and say, pay us more. Now, some people say, well, that was the design of the system. I could see Proposition Two and a Half for capital improvements. Do you want a new school? Do you want a new police station? Do you want something like that? But just to maintain level services over a three-to-five-year period, the inability to do that means we're not financially viable. And capital improvements, yes, day-to-day, no. And I would say again, the state really needs to get us other sources of revenue that are dedicated to cities and the expenses of cities and towns, and that needs to come from the general tax burden overall at this point, whether they choose to sell, share the meals tax with us, and we send five and a half million dollars a year out of here on meals tax to the state. They gave us three-quarters of a percent. We send that much money to them every year, in the hopes that they'll give us aid. But unfortunately, we're, in their eyes... But unfortunately, we're, in their eyes, economically viable, because we could, you know, the tax rate is 1426 now. It could go up to $25 under Proposition Two and a Half. I mean, we could override it that far, but it isn't, it's very, very regressive to do that. They really need to find other sources of revenue so that we can use the override process for capital improvement, but that we could, at the very least, level service every year with the, within the scope of the existing tax burden, state and local, so that we can do the things we need to do. And it's totally disrespectful to all the cities and towns in Massachusetts that the legislature does not choose to own up to that problem and deal with it. And that's my general comment about all this.
Thank you. There was a motion to close the hearing.
I guess not.
Oh.
No, I-
You made that motion, and is there, and there was a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And there's a motion to call for a break. Let me just say that-
Second.
I'll third it.
We're going to recess. That public hearing was a little over three hours. I appreciate everyone's participation, I am very grateful for it, and we will reconvene in about seven minutes. Welcome back. We're, we haven't even convened the City Council meeting yet. So first, I'm going to ask the Clerk to call the rule.
She did.
Well, that was for the hearing, did that come from the council?
She did. Yeah.
Okay. Woo, we don't have to do that. Now, we've been discussing during the recess and how we can actually pare down this agenda so that some of the stuff that we can defer, because we heard from three people in the course of three hours for the public hearing, so now, in order to conform to our rules, which require us to call for adjournment at 11:00, that there are some things that we can move back for the next meeting. There are some things that need to move up. One of the things that I'd like to move up with the Council's indulgence is having Terry Masters come to speak on the parcel of Village Hill. But before we do that, Mary, what's the stuff that we can move on to the next meeting? That's, we should work this out here before we, the resolutions that are before us, the one on vibrant sidewalks and the one on, the sponsored one for gun control from the Youth Commission, I'm not sure what the Council's pleasure is on that. I think the gun control one can certainly be postponed until the next meeting, there's a presentation on that. I'm not, I would ask Councilor Carney how she would feel about deferring that to the next, the next meeting?
I suppose it, yeah, I mean, given the time, it's 10:30.
Right. I think, I think part of the pressure is, of course, we want to have, that needs, that clearly the community gave us a sense that they want a full vetting and a discussion of that, and I think that's appropriate to devote the time that we won't have tonight the way it's shaped. So why, we'll, so we'll, we'll cut up the resolutions. The, the street acceptance issues, we, the, Mary has now given us-
Can I make a brief one-minute announcement?
Yeah, no, I'm not bypassing.
Oh, we're not bypassing, okay.
No, we'll still join that. I'm just, also, the, I'm just talking, we're, right now, we're trying to pare down the agenda so that we can do this in appropriate fashion, the-
So I'm going to, I move that we consider Resolution One and Two next, to next meeting.
Second.
All those in favor of-
What's Resolution One and Two?
I'm sorry, it's, you're not allowed to actually speak from the floor at this point, this is a council thing, so it's, it's on the agenda and you can see it.
It is not the streets.
It's not the streets.
It's not the streets.
It's not the streets. The motion is to move the resolutions for, to support vibrant sidewalks and also regulating high-capacity weapons to the next meeting.
Move to move.
That's, that's moved?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry? That's correct, that was just the resolutions, that was the motion. Relevant to the issues on street approval, acceptance, and disapproval, which is we, we, as I said, I was speaking, we have these packets that were just handed to us, and I think, I hate to do this to Ned and Terry.
No, no, I think we should-
I think we should-
They stayed here.
Yeah, they've been here for three hours.
They've been here since-
I would like to say that we can stay here for the extra time.
I know.
All right.
I'm glad they were getting.
All right, so-
Voting note 11.
It's just, the Council has given us his notice of intent. We can move the reports of the committees, is there one, do I hear a motion to that?
I motion that reports one through four from, one through three, under reports of committees, be moved to next meeting.
Already removed.
Is there a second?
I already-
There's a motion, a second, and another motion, same one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We do need to recess for finance, that will not pass because that has to get referred out. The, so, um-
And other, what about the other referrals?
That's an easy one, get it out of the way.
All right, let's get this meeting started then.
Yep, let's start with this.
Just upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoitz ordered that, whereas the City of Northampton wishes to target and promote investment in economic growth, and the City of Northampton specifically, the planned Christopher Heights Assisted Living Facility now therefore be ordered to designate the Village Hill Development Parcel located at Village Hill Drive and Moser Street as an economic opportunity area for Christopher Heights Economic Opportunity Area, and Attorney Masters is here.
I move to move.
Second?
We'll recognize Terry Masters.
Second.
All those in favor of recognizing-
Aye.
Terry, come on up.
The Village Hill Development is an EOA. The State has asked us to create a EOA within the existing one for this specific building as part of the overall services and incentive package for the Village Hill Development, excuse me, the Christopher Heights 83-unit assisted living facility. The Massachusetts Economic Development Board is going to meet on June 25th to approve the overall package, and we had passed a resolution agreeing to the TIF, which is the trigger for the other incentives, the HOW, the, the HOW, the Community Development, I must have the specific title of it, but the TIF that he worked out to offset against, was it historic credits or?
The Grantham Group was the, the-
Grantham Group. So this is just a part of the overall clerical package that they need to see to approve it on the 25th that we designated.
So the State asked the city to pass this so that it would, they would become eligible for some credits that they're applying for? Is that kind of the idea?
Yes, yes.
Appology credits.
And, okay.
Yes.
It's, Mary points out that we do this for every TIF.
Mm-hmm.
It's okay. Part of the tea ceremony that we do with the State, since we've already been dissing them all night.
Lots of sizzle, no steak.
Lots of sizzle, no steak. Any other questions for Terry on this? Terry, did I understand that we want two readings on this tonight? Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Is timing involved in the two readings, naturally?
The meeting's on the 25th. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I move first reading?
All right, so the first reading is moved, all those-
Second.
This is going to require a false rule call.
It's an, it's neither an ordinance or an appropriation.
Okay, let's, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Move to suspend rules for second reading?
Second.
Aye.
All those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move second reading?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor on second reading?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? All right. Thank you, Terry. I hope you had a good time tonight. See you later.
I'll come back, now you're here.
All right, let's do the one-minute announcements and shake those out of the way. Councilor Adams, you had to end up before anyone.
I'm just announcing that at the Public Safety Meeting in September, which is the next time that we're scheduled to have the, the police come and give us an update using our investigatory function, I have requested that the Police Department present to us on the procedures and protocols surrounding the Jonas Correa arrest, and specifically to describe to us the level of force used and, and explain to us the police conduct surrounding that incident and the usage of OC spray, and they'll be presenting to, that to us so we can ask questions if we have any, and, and all members of the public are invited. Sorry, Counselor-
Date again, please.
Date and time again. September 9th at 5:00.
September 9th.
Yeah, that's the next-
September 9th in, in these chambers.
Just clarification, the public's invited, but they're, the public has comment, a comment period, not an interlock.
That's right, it's not going to be interactive with the police. Right, they, there's a public comment period, the public can come and attend, but after the public comment period, the public will, will not be taking part in the meeting directly, interactively.
That's keeping with the common.
Keeping with our rules, right.
Are there any other one-minute announcements?
Chief Sinkowitz will be there, he's having, he's having, he's going to have someone else present, so I'm not entirely sure who else he's having present, but someone else who he's asked to come and familiarize us with the protocols.
Okay. Any other one-minute announcements?
I just really, I just want to announce the passing of Raymond W. Labarge's daughter. Lynn Labarge Day, she passed away at 62 years old on Tuesday. And she's a friend of mine, and thank you.
Thanks, thank you. Any other announcements? Okay. We're going to move on to the Board of Public Works, Terry and Ed. Yeah, I've got my packet. This is petition, I'm sorry.
Just, do you think we could do the licenses and reapportments?
Do you want to do licenses and reapportments first? That's the, all right, let's go to that. This is for, this is a Sunday license for four pool tables on the second floor and four pool tables on the third floor for Packards at 14 Masonic Street, Northampton.
Does that move we grant the license?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of granting the license?
Aye.
Opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. This is a reapportionment, appointment to committee from Mayor David J. Narcoitz. Please find the attached appointments and reapportments to City Boards and Committees and Commissions. Sandra Hallowell has a reapportionment to the registrar of voters.
Suspend Rule 30.
Motion to suspend Rule 30?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of suspending rules?
Aye.
Is there another motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. All right. As to petitions for street acceptance, for King Avenue, and this is the Planning Board recommendate, no recommendation, April 11th, 2013, and the BPW recommendation was not ready.
I move that the Council recognizes Director Huntley-
Second.
Chairman Colhane.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor of recognizing Mr. Huntley and Colhane? All right, now you guys can come on. Those chairs don't get any softer, do they? Chad can tell you that. Chad, Chad's doing community service for some horrible, horrible thing he must have done. Terry, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Hey.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Colhane, is it, is it the case that you do not want the Council to vote on the petition for street acceptance on King Avenue?
I believe we've, our vote was that we didn't think it met-
Oh, I'm sorry. If it says, if it says the recommendation's not ready.
On our agenda.
But if that's not the case, then, I mean, that, sometimes the-
I'm caught a little bit by surprise, I thought we were talking about Center Court and-
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to help the Council President pick off some easy, some easy things. If it's not, if King Avenue isn't ready, then just put it off to the next meeting, yeah.
We've got no problem deferring that if, if that is your preference.
It's not, it's not ready, they have work that they still have to do, but a petition was submitted to you, it was connected to the King Avenue.
I'm sorry?
It's with your packet. A petition by residents of King Ave was submitted.
Have we gotten a recommendation from the Board of Public Works regarding King Avenue?
You have not.
Okay.
So as of this moment, we, the initial vote was that we feel it does not meet minimal criteria to be recommended to you for acceptance as a public street. This process has been interesting, and I have to admit, as we work our way through the streets, in the number of some dozens now, you do think back to some of the earlier streets where we voted along the same lines, and like, well, maybe that should have gotten the yes vote. I mean, you know, you start looking at dozens of streets and it's such a hodgepodge. We've decided, as a board, that we're going to circle back to those streets that we essentially voted no to, and just review those votes once we've reached the end of the process.
So that would be reconsidered.
Would that include the two tonight, Bradford and Center?
Yes.
So you would review those again at the end?
We're going to review all of the ones that failed to garner support.
So therefore, tonight, we maybe are not being asked to weigh in one way or another because you're going to come back and-
Aye.
Take another crack at it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And based on that, I had asked Ned to hold on to those streets where we had, that had failed to generate sufficient support, instead of forwarding them to you. We're going to go back.
So, can I have one more question? So therefore, it seems to me tonight, what we're really looking at are just those that you have said, we think these streets should be accepted.
Yes, we have made the recommendation that you-
Now it comes to us, you're recommending those, and it's up to us to vote, do we agree with that, do we vote yes?
Nothing's being recommended tonight.
Is that true?
Sorry, there's no rec-
No recommending tonight.
Petitions for street acceptance are referred, you want those referred, I'm sorry.
We're hoping that they'll get referred back to us because we have, we have hearings scheduled.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I found this one kind of odd, the King Avenue one, it, I know that twice in my lifetime that the city has reconstructed the street. They installed a water main, sewer main, they ground it, removed all the material, they put new gravel in, degraded it, paved it. It looks like a city street. It looks like a city street.
A city street, it does.
And I, I just found it, Warner, and I spoke with Mr. Huntley about it also, and it is exactly like Warner Row, as far as I can see, which was accepted. So I, I, I just, I found this one absolutely odd.
Counselor Murphy and then Counselor Freeman.
Just to follow up on Counselor Freeman Daniels, I'm, I'm a little confused, because we have disapproval of two streets. We have one that you're not ready, so theoretically we would postpone that one, but then you tell us, well, you're thinking now that you're through the process, you've learned more and you want to go start over again, so even the ones you've recommended disapproval on, maybe you're going to change your mind, so maybe we shouldn't vote on anything because you're going to start all over again. Could you clarify, did I understand it correctly?
There are half a dozen streets out of the 40, approximately half a dozen streets There are half a dozen streets out of the 40, approximately half a dozen streets out of the 40 that have failed to generate support.
Yeah.
We have decided that we'll, we'll circle back to those at the end of the process, which is coming up fairly soon.
So, but in the meantime, we probably shouldn't start the process of disapproving them, only to have you come back and say, shucks, we changed our mind. Maybe we should just hold on what we do until you're, circle back and finish.
That's what I was just saying.
Yeah.
Did you want to respond to that, Terry, and then Counsel Freeman?
I don't think that's unreasonable, I'm not sure that you need to do anything. I, I don't think.
Well, they're already not streets, so.
Exactly.
Right.
Needs to do anything. We felt that we needed to explicitly say that we don't think the street makes the cut because of the plowing issue. I, I don't think that it implies though that you need to do anything further.
And I for one appreciate the fact that you've learned, it's not a bad thing to have learned from the process and want to at least provide consistency and say, all right, we've learned something, let's give them all a look again based on our experience and our input, so I could certainly support that.
So, okay, and, and the ones we're talking, we're talking about a half a dozen, eight, seven or eight?
Counsel Spitzer and then Counsel.
So just for the sake of understanding what we're doing right now tonight, what I'm hearing is, what we would be doing is just voting to make the referral of these other streets. Under item three, that, that really is.
That would be terrific.
That is the one thing you were asking us to actually do tonight is to.
Those residents have been notified by certified mail that we're going to have a hearing on those streets, and it'd be great.
I'll move those as a group to be.
I'll second that.
The planning board.
Motion, there's a motion on the floor for, to move item three petition for street acceptance, I'll, I'll name them. Maple Avenue, Bratton Court, Franklin Court, Awagad Avenue, Carey Street, uh, Hibbert Avenue, Greeley Avenue, Clark Street, Pine Valley Road Extension. And those are to be referred to the planning board and the Board of Public Works. Counsel Freeman Daniels on the motion.
Yes, it's on the motion. Have, has the board seen these streets prior?
No.
So these are new street acceptance petitions. But first the petitions, and now you'll schedule hearings.
Correct.
So.
In fact, we have taken the liberty of already scheduling them.
Okay, well, yeah, that's okay, but, um, the, so, so, uh, these, all of these have been petitioned recently.
Yes.
And they've, we're receiving them, we haven't, we haven't received them in the foreseeable past, and we're going to, and the board will now have the hearing on them.
Right, and the planning board will have an opportunity to make a recommendation.
This is on the, on the.
On the motion, yep. Counsel Tacey on the motion.
Yes, um, I just intend to, to move these.
Oh, they were moved, they were.
They were moved.
On the floor and they're moved to go.
They were referred.
All the questions?
And, uh, Counsel Murphy?
Well, I just, I, I just want to disclose that I'm not going to participate in this group because I own a property on Awagad Avenue, so. I just, even in the referral, that's a harmless one, but I don't want to participate in that one too.
In defense of the DP, or Board of Public Works, this is a hugely complex issue and they're walking on eggshells as they walk, as they move through this. And, um, just, I intend to make an omelet over King Avenue.
All right, so let it be noted that there will be an abstention from Counsel Murphy.
An omelet from.
An omelet.
I'm going to make it an egg McMuffin.
All right, now we're getting punchy and we're getting lost.
Call the questions.
And we're, so all those in favor of referring the items under, I mean, under, all the streets under item three?
Move to refer.
These say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions? That's one abstention. Thank you. Uh, Counsel Freeman Daniels.
Chairman Colhane, uh, you sat here for, you sat in the audience for three hours.
Well, now four.
Three and a half hours. And you, you just sat in the audience to ask us to refer these streets that we probably would have referred anyway? I'm not sure that, I don't think, I don't think we're getting, we're hearing the right thing from you.
My understanding was that you wanted to talk about Bradford Street and Center Court.
Okay, so, all right, so these Bradford Street and Center Court are not the, the dozen, or not within the. The so, the so-called dozen that you're going to circle back to after.
They are.
They are.
Yeah.
This is new information that the board has, uh, King Avenue, for example, I mean, we can see these inconsistencies building up, and so we want to go back to those streets.
Just to keep the floor here, um, what I'm not understanding though, just procedurally, is that, uh, if this, if the council votes to disapprove these petitions, I believe, wouldn't there have to be new petitions submitted for the board to accept them?
Counsel Spitzer.
Yeah, we're not going to, I think this is the question, so, so that we're, I think we're all getting tired, this is what I asked Terry at the beginning, we're not going to be voting on these.
But then why are we talking about them?
We're not.
We're not.
But he just said he wanted to talk.
No, he did not, no, he did not, you, you said it, he said you wanted to talk about it.
You invited us, me, my understanding was I was invited here this evening to talk about these two streets.
Exactly. And we're.
We don't need to tonight.
But we don't need to tonight.
So we've clarified.
It's new news, and we've decided to circle back and review the.
All right, so I think. I'm sorry that you sat, you waited for three hours to tell us that we didn't have to talk about this stuff.
All right, well, for, for clarity's sake now, then we've moved the streets and they've, that have been referred, uh, there's no sense in talking about items one and two at this point, you did also put in community service, it means you go to heaven faster than the rest of us, and that's, so.
It was a fascinating meeting.
Appreciate your time, both of you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we're up to approval.
This is ridiculous.
No, so they just came to represent a referral. The, now we're coming, we're up to approval minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh, thank you, any discussion minutes? All those in favor of moving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're deferring the reports to committees, now we're going to recess for finance. And I'm passing the gavel over to Counsel Murphy.
Figuratively.
No orders, okay.
Figuratively, yeah, figuratively. So, can we, um, we need to call a roll. We've got to call a roll. Here.
Here.
Counsel Labarge?
Yes.
Here.
Is refer the 2014 budget. So, would a member of finance wish to refer the FY14 budget?
To refer.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone want to move to adjourn finance?
Adjourn.
To adjourn it.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
There's finance, did you enjoy that? We're out of finance, now we're back into the regular meeting. They do a whole lot better than me, clearly. This is, uh, second reading upon the recommendation of the Department of Public Works, uh, this is about the, I think we're going to have to wait for Counsel Freeman Daniels, this is the drainage easement.
Could we, could we move to number three? Number three?
Three.
Well, let's move to three, yes. We just lost Counselor Adams, so.
They're dropping like flies. We still have a.
Mr. President, we still have a quorum.
We still have a quorum. Here's Counsel Freeman Daniels. We're back, and Counsel Freeman Daniels, just wanted to wait for you, this is the, on the recommendation of the Board of Public Works, this is the easement for, uh, the Bridge Street School Drainage.
Move to approve?
Second it.
Second. Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Uh, I want to, um, thank the, uh, the council for, um, actually, I want to thank the Board of, the Department of Public Works and the City Central Services Department for, uh, going out and having a meeting with the residents of Graves Avenue. And, um, giving them the, really the first look at the, at the plans. And, um, the, there are some issues about process that were rather concerning during this, uh, during this meeting, or actually during this, during this whole process. One of which being that the easement we're asked to accept, um, when it came to the council, it was already, it had already been completed and signed and notarized, and, uh, so it, it made it very difficult if there were any changes that the, that any counselor wanted to make, specifically me, it, it was already, it was done. It was already, the ink had already dried for over a month. It was also difficult for us to, um, respond to many of the Department of Public Works plans because it, they, they really weren't, um, shown to, to me and to the residents, uh, beforehand. So, um, after two weeks of scrambling around, um, I'd like to ask the council to postpone this to the, to the set, to the next meeting. Because, um, we, we're working on some slightly amended language for the, for the easement, and we're, we're almost there. We have agreement in principle from, uh, all the parties, but we don't actually have a new easement with amended lang, with new language signed. So, um, I, I'm hoping that if the council will, uh, allow us two, two extra weeks to complete a new easement that the, the residents of Graves Avenue are much more comfortable with, and the city is fine with, and the owners are fine with, that we'll be able to have a, um, a more suitable acceptance.
Second. I make it, okay.
So there's a, there's a motion and a second?
That was his motion, I second it.
Everyone wants to second that motion, so it's, uh, the motion is to postpone the 20th, uh, the discussion of this easement.
And can I also say, just as, can I make a comment, that, um, the construction's scheduled for June 20th, like, 5th or 6th? So, but, so there is, time is important here, but we, I believe we will have everything done by then.
So it would be your pleasure to have two readings.
Well, no, this is the second reading.
This is the second reading.
Second.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, that's.
Aye.
All right, so all, yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
If you want to, you say aye. Opposed, any abstentions?
Okay.
This is, uh, this is second reading for, um, this is on the code of ordinance, excuse me, starting to cave in here. This is the, to establish the, uh, elected officials compensation advisory board, this is second reading.
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And, uh, well, I'm sorry, this is a roll call anyway, so we'll be able to register that.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Turner? Yes. Counsel Labarge?
Aye.
Yes.
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 Now what's left to me is to, um, announce some, uh. Yep.
I don't have to do that announcement.
What's that?
As we do this compensa, uh, compensation advisory board, never mind, remember, I forgot what they called it.
Old timers?
We were involved in something that was involved.
The compensation.
Compensation.
Yeah. This is established.
Yeah, we had to create one, yeah, but we had to come up with something, we had to take a vote before, and we all had to acknowledge that we were part of it.
That was only.
I can't, I forgot what they called it, you can't think either, so you all got old timers.
Yeah, I do. Old timers.
Why don't we?
Vote of necessity.
Vote of necessity.
We don't need, we don't need that.
That was it.
Counsel Adams remembered it.
We've got five minutes, we're going to do this. This is, uh, I'm going to announce some public hearings, um, but are there any committee chairs who want to have an update?
How about the number four, are we not doing that tonight?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's been, uh, the city solicitors have to have that removed. Are there any committee chairs that have any updates? All right. The, this is an announcement of the city council FY 2014 budget hearing with the city departments, and as we said, it's the school department, the, uh, Leo Department, Arts Council, uh, dispatch.
Forbes Library.
And Forbes Library. And that, uh, that will be Tuesday, June 11th, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM, God willing. Okay. Uh, the, you know, this, uh, on Thursday, June 20th, uh, 2013, at 7:05 PM, this is a public hearing regarding the Department of Public Works at 125 Locust Street, an application for license for storage of fuel. Uh, and then also an announcement for a public hearing on Thursday, June 20th, 2013, at 7:10 PM, this is regarding the Department of Public Works, 33 Hockenham Road, it's an application for license for storage of fuel. God, there's two hearings on that, and then, and then June 20th, also 2013, this is regarding petition for hole and wire locations, uh, on Haydenville Road, and that will be here. They're all here. They're all here, so, uh, any new business or topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate would, could be discussed? Is there Counsel Murphy?
I do have something, I do have one, and it's a quickie. If you all recall, uh, Middle Street parking, we tabled.
Yes.
And, um, it still remains an issue, so I'd like to request that we take it off the table. I was going to suggest at our next meeting, but that agenda is pretty deep.
That's the, we will be doing all the orders, all the, all the budgetary orders.
So, um, I was going to suggest our next meeting, and I cannot make the 27th, so put it from off the table for our first meeting in July, or our, our only meeting in July. Only meeting. So I would move July, just because it's so busy till we get to July.
Second.
Aye.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, because I didn't, I didn't want to invite them all to come unless we.
That's a July, July 11th.
Adjourn, move to adjourn it, Kate. Second, all those in favor?
Is that July 11th?
Yeah, it's the only meeting.
Bush made a.
June.
July 11th, it's the only, it's the only meeting, all right.
Yeah, that's good.